Good evening. I'll call to order the October 10, 2024 Lewisville Planning Commission With a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bangs, Commissioner Choi.
Here.
Commissioner Bousquet.
Here.
Commissioner Morley.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
And Chair Brown Eyes.
Here. Thank you. With that then, I would like to entertain a motion to approve this evening. Can we ask for quiet, please, in the room? Excuse me. Excuse me, we're having the meeting now. Thank you. With a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And looking at our July minutes, do we have any corrections that commissioners wanted to make? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the July minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries with me as an abstention, please. I was not there.
Could you speak up, please?
Maybe? All right. Thank you. With that then, it's still not great, huh? I will now open the floor up for public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If there's anybody who wanted to speak to an issue that is not part of the two noticed items. Can somebody double check the Zoom for me?
Looks like we're good.
Seeing no hands there either, okay. We will now open it up to one item of new business, a zoning code amendment regarding natural medicines. Actually, I'll read the script off here. I will now open the public hearing on the request for a zoning code amendment, consideration of an amendment to the Lewisville Municipal Code, total 17, to allow natural medicine businesses in compliance with the Colorado Senate Bill 23290. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application, it's not an application, but the materials before us and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for this hearing will be as follows. There will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. After this presentation, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding it. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card, use the raise hand function if participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant, in this case, staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close public hearing, and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and city of residence. Does anyone here participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing no objections, do we have notification?
Notice is satisfied.
Thank you. If you can proceed, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Matt Post, senior planner on the community development team. Tonight I'll be presenting Resolution Number 11, Series 2024, recommending approval of an ordinance amending the Lewisville Municipal Code to allow and regulate natural medicine businesses. Quick background here, this is going first tonight because we are obligated to adopt this ordinance before the end of the year. So from, in relation to the continuance that's on the agenda tonight, that's why this is the first agenda item.
Thanks, and I'll just double check in to see if anybody has new disclosures regarding this issue. Seeing none, thanks.
So in November of 2022, Colorado voters passed Proposition 122, which along with Senate Bill 23290, decriminalized the possession, cultivation, sharing, and use of psilocybin and other related substances. The new state law designates psilocybin and other related substances as natural medicine. For those that may be unfamiliar, psilocybin and psilocin are the psychoactive compounds found in what are commonly referred to as psychedelic mushrooms. The new state law permits the supervised use of natural medicine in cultivation, manufacturing, and testing of natural medicine at natural medicine businesses, which we will cover in more detail in subsequent slides. The law states that local jurisdictions may not prohibit natural medicine businesses, though we may regulate the time, place, and manner of those businesses. The state plans to begin issuing licenses for natural medicine businesses in 2025. Accordingly, local regulations for natural medicine should be in place by December 31, 2024. Again, that's the reason for this meeting tonight. We have two first readings pending the outcome of this hearing with city council in November and December for adoption before the end of the year. Prior to coming to planning commission, staff presented a discussion and direction memorandum to city council requesting their feedback on a number of items that occurred on September 3. We defined natural medicine businesses, asked for city council feedback on that. We proposed zone districts for those uses, and then also recommended supplemental regulations. Again, this was all discussed with city council. Council expressed agreement with the proposed definitions and regulations, though there were additional discussions that will be covered in subsequent slides. So under the new state law, the use of natural medicine for mental health treatment or other medicinal purposes is restricted to natural medicine healing centers. Staff anticipate those natural medicine healing centers will operate similarly to licensed medical or therapy offices. The natural medicine at these centers would be administered by a trained facilitator, which is licensed by the state of Colorado. To qualify for licensure as a facilitator, a facilitator must complete at least 150 hours of coursework on a range of topics, including best practices, ethics, rules, regulations, drug effects, interactions, and trauma-informed care, among other items. Natural medicine healing sessions may last four to eight hours, depending on the individual and their ability to metabolize the natural medicine. The state law requires that a facilitator have a transportation plan in place prior to a session where natural medicine is administered. Operating a motor vehicle while under the influence of natural medicine remains illegal. Natural medicine businesses also include facilities for the cultivation, manufacture, and testing of natural medicine products. These facilities specialize in cultivating psilocybin mushrooms and producing related products. Staff and city council again anticipate these uses to be similar to a manufacturing and/or light industrial use. It's important to note that excluding testing facilities, the joint location of natural medicine businesses is permitted under state law, but is also subject to local zoning restrictions, so we can cover that in subsequent slides as well. So in regard to supplemental regulations, the state has instituted buffer standards for natural medicine businesses, mandating that natural medicine businesses be at least 1,000 feet away from any licensed childcare facility, elementary school, middle school, or high school. The buffer map that's presented here currently shows licensed childcare facilities and K through 12 schools within the city. The 1,000-foot buffer would apply to each of those properties. It was, I should note, it was brought to the attention of staff that there is an additional school that's not on this map. It's outside of Lewisville's jurisdiction. It's in the northeast corner. It's in Lafayette. So what this map represents here are the zone districts where natural medicine businesses would be permitted, and then the buffers in highlighted black there inside those buffers would be where those uses are not permitted, again, based on the requirements of the state law. So any zone district that you see colored in yellow or green is not eligible for a natural medicine business. Those would generally be single-family residential areas and open spaces. It's also important to note that the entirety of downtown Louisville is excluded from being able to establish or have a natural medicine business. That's simply based on the buffer. So as childcare facilities or schools open and close, this buffer map will change, and so a natural medicine healing center specifically, which would be a permitted use based on our proposal in the commercial community zone district, may be established in downtown Louisville if the buffer changes. And so this map is not a policy map. It's not going to be adopted tonight. It's simply a representation of existing licensed childcare facilities and schools. So every instance of a license application to the city should also include a run through the buffer map, right? Because these change over time. This even includes in-home child daycare facilities that are licensed with the state. So again, we'll run the buffer map every time license application would come in. In addition to the supplemental regulations that are included in the buffer, discussion with city council included limitations on hours of operation for these uses. There was quite a bit of discussion around it. Some other jurisdictions that have already adopted these policies have had implemented regulations or restrictions on hours of operation that amounted to pretty restrictive uses. Staff, based on deliberation with city council, are recommending an 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. hours of operation. So this will allow for a facilitator to serve multiple patients in a day. If you recall, based on the research that we've done, a patient session can last anywhere from four to eight hours, and so this would allow for more access to the natural medicine therapy businesses or natural medicine healing centers. So eight to 10 would be the recommended hours of operation. So as stated, staff and city council anticipate that natural medicine healing centers, again, where natural medicine is administered, will operate similar to medical or therapy offices. So we believe it most appropriate to align the use with professional or medical offices that are permitted in the zone districts that are presented on this slide. Again, that's also reflected on the buffer map here, all of those zone districts. It is worth noting that the ordinance being presented tonight also includes an update to Title IX of the Lewisville Municipal Code. This would be to address criminal penalties that are associated with the use of natural medicine. So if you look at the ordinance, there are updates to Title IX. The planning commission has no purview on the review of those. We were asked to include those updates on the ordinance that's going through tonight. So if you see that, that would be why those are in there, so criminal offenses related in natural medicine. And with that, staff recommend approval of Resolution 11, Series 2024, recommending the city council approval of an ordinance amending Title IX and Title 17 of the Lewisville Municipal Code to allow and regulate natural medicine businesses. And so happy to answer any questions from the planning commission.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Hunt?
I was just curious how it will be handled if, because this buffer zone can change all the time, if someone gets licensed and then a childcare facility opens up within 1,000 feet of them?
Yeah, I think that's an interesting question. We contemplated that as a staff, and I think the takeaway there is that we don't believe that we can force that business to close in that scenario. It would be, we would probably consider that a non-conforming use one way or the other. So there's no direction in the rulemaking provided by the state at that point that I was able to find, so.
But that would be something that a childcare facility would know, that there's a licensed, I mean, there'd be a way of, they would know that, right? Before opening?
They should. I can tell you that for a number of licensed childcare facilities, we as a jurisdiction actually don't review them and their license through the state. We will on occasion get a zoning verification letter request or a request from a state agency to just confirm that the zoning would permit in-home licensed daycare, but it would be the responsibility of that childcare provider to ensure that they're not, if that's an issue for them or if it's being handled on the state licensing side, I can't necessarily answer that question at the time, so.
I have a question. So earlier in your presentation, you said we had three variables. The city could control time, place, and?
Manner.
And manner?
Manner.
Meaning the kind of building, or?
Yeah, you know, that's interesting. So I, manner may relate to the kind of building, but I would say it would may relate to more supplemental regulations. For example, other jurisdictions adopted regulations that would relate to nuisances, noise, and odors and things of that nature. I would say that that would likely be the more, the parallel to manner. Our nuisance code addresses those items already, so we didn't feel it necessary to add any additional regulations.
Okay. And did staff take a look at comparable cities and the policies they have?
We did. What I would say is that this is, came onto us so fast from a state requirement that there are truthfully not many jurisdictions within the state that have adopted policies yet, so we're all kind of doing this at the same time right now. Parker and Castle Rock are two jurisdictions that did adopt the ordinance early, and again, the feedback that they received is that they were, the ordinance that they adopted ended up being overly restrictive based on some of their restrictions on manner of operations, some of their restrictions on hours of operation, and then some additional buffer requirements that they had. We did some additional research with the city of Boulder. They were kind of, we were running a concurrent process or a parallel process, and I would say that what we've recommended from a use perspective is generally in line with what Boulder is recommending, although they were also considering a residential buffer, which we considered as well, but in actually running the buffer map, it essentially unreasonably restricted natural medicine businesses and was not a path forward for the adoption of the ordinance.
Sure. Commissioner Choi?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. A couple of questions for you. So understanding that there would be a use by right, right, with a categorical characterization as staff has contemplated of professional or medical office, if these healing centers were treated in the same fashion as that professional medical office, the municipal code defines that as the office of an engineer, dentist, doctor, attorney, real estate broker, insurance broker, architect, or other similar professional persons. Can you just talk a little bit about how you came up with that category to align with a natural healing center?
Yeah, sure.
Or even a manufacturing or testing center?
Yeah, absolutely. I guess the first thing I'll say to that is we did develop new, the ordinance contains new land uses, and so it's not, I just want to be clear, it's not being wrapped up into the office use category. They are new land uses. But just for the purposes of analysis, we did compare it most closely to the medical office uses, and that's just based on the licensing requirements and what the state intended with the bill, that it is intended to be a medical practice or medical sessions that assist in therapy. Generally, professional therapists would be those engaging in this practice, and so that was the approach. That was also, we took that approach based on research, again, that we had done on some of the other jurisdictions that had already adopted and/or were adopting, including the city of Boulder, which had a similar recommendation.
Okay. So, you know, an engineer, a dentist, a doctor, an attorney, or an architect are categories or professions within that category that require at least four to eight years of study and testing and licensure compared to, I think you said, 50 or 150 hours?
Of coursework.
Coursework. So I think there's a little bit of a discrepancy, right, in terms of the contemplation of what the requirements are to be undertaking that profession as compared to like some of the other state licensures, right, for, you know, estheticians or, you know, some of those things that require a lower threshold while still meeting a standard of care, and those are also kind of licensed businesses and other types. Okay, so that was just a "I wonder why" type of question. The other "I wonder why" type of question is in the zone districts where this would be contemplated or allowed in relation to the buffer map, you have residential mixed use in there as well. You said you contemplated a buffer for residential but would allow it in residential mixed use. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so the buffer for residential, I should be more explicit, was considered or contemplated in regard to primarily single-family residential, so our RM, RL, RH zone districts, which are primarily single-family. We made the decision to include the MUR zone district because there's not a lot of MUR zoning, and again, the medical offices are generally permitted uses, not generally, they are permitted uses in the MUR zone district, and so we felt it unnecessary to further restrict the natural medicine business use from MUR.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Sure. Commissioner Bangs.
You mentioned earlier, some cities have determined their initial policies were too restrictive. So what's the city's ability to revisit? Should we determine it's too restrictive or too lax?
I would imagine it would be another ordinance update brought before commission and council, and as far as what would trigger that, I can't necessarily tell you what that would be, but I can just say through conversations with our attorney, with our city attorney, that we heard that, that they were restrictive and they may need to reconsider the ordinance. So as not to be in violation of the state law in being, in unreasonably restricting the use, and so I think we feel that what we've presented here with the number of zone districts available and the hours of operation, that we're in line with the intent of the state law.
Any additional questions, staff? At this time, seeing none, I would like to open up a public comment. Please let yourselves do three minutes and begin with your city, or your name and city of residence. I believe we have at least one. And as we welcome you up, we'll also enter addendum one into the public, into the public record, because that includes a comment from that. So all in favor of, I would entertain a motion to move addendum one into public record.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. We welcome up Mr. Cathcart.
Thank you, Chair. Before my three-minute start, I have a point of order question, if I may. I'd like to ask if this is the exact packet that you have?
I'll defer to staff on that.
Is this the one that you've got? The one that's been presented to the commission?
That was sent as an addendum today to reflect all the public comments. So they have seen that as well, what you have.
Right, so I know this isn't your issue, Planning Commission Chair. This is the fourth time this year that my input, which I personally consider important, I rushed away from my daughter's volleyball game. They are 11 and 0 this year, so, you know, it's important to be there. So I rushed away from Monarch to come here this evening because I thought that my input was important. I don't know what goes on in staff, but this is four different things my input's been left out of. So I'm gonna, you can start my three minutes now, but if I?
Your email was in what we received?
Yeah, the email, the attachment isn't. If this is the, if this is the packet you've got, there's no attachment in it.
Okay, the link, got it.
So I would ask, please, give me just a few extra seconds to read my input. So I understand, my name's Mark Cathcart, I live in the North End neighborhood. I'm so frustrated with this process following on to the marijuana process, which we turn into a mad rush in the city. You know, I understand that you don't have a lot of flexibility in this because we've got to pass something, but I watched exactly this happen last time. I now have the closest single-family home to a marijuana dispensary in the whole state of Colorado. That was done without any notification. The only change we got was to move the front door to that dispensary, and that was undone when it changed ownership and we were given no right of objection. So, let's deal with natural medicine cultivation. My personal view on this is you should not do anything that you didn't already do for marijuana. It is hypocritical at best. I understand the state has passed laws. I watched exactly the same school that's in Lafayette, Colorado, get left off of the map for the marijuana regulations. It's still off. I don't understand. Are we doing this seriously or not? So, you know, I think that you should change it, all the regulations, your recommendation to the council should be, they should adopt exactly what they adopted for marijuana regulations. I've listed the ordinance in my attachment that you don't have. I personally would much rather have a medically trained person than the people I have to put up with 100 feet from my bedroom, do it in the marijuana dispensary. We keep getting whiffs of it, they walk up the trail. That just isn't going to happen with natural medicine centers. So I will be turning up at the city council and ranting at them. I understand that this is not your problem, and that you're probably as frustrated with this rush to regulation as I am, so for once I'm finished before my time's up. Thank you for listening to me. We've got to do better on the city input though, Chair. If you could ask the city clerk or the city manager to do better, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If there's a letter missed, I'm assuming he had an attachment to his email that was missed, which happens from time to time. Is that correct, Mr. Cathcart? There was an attachment?
Yes, it was PDF.
Okay. I think it might be appropriate, before you make a decision, we could print that and distribute it to the commission if you'd like. I would hate to miss something. If you want to take a recess.
How many pages?
It's okay.
It's also linked in the?
It's another issue entirely. I heard my position, I'd rather have natural medicine there than have marijuana.
So, right, so I'm just trying, so if there was something, so the electronic version that you received has a hyperlink?
Right.
And that works electronically, so it wasn't included in the paper version that's hung up there?
Right.
So just to be clear, you have access to it electronically?
Yeah, as we would have.
I just wanted to clear the record?
Okay.
To make sure you had access, and if you want a printed version?
Okay.
We will do that.
I think, I feel comfortable with it, so, all right. Thank you. Any additional comments on this issue? If you're on the Zoom, please use raise hand function, star nine if you're participating by telephone. Nobody? Okay. All right then. Does the city have a response or closing statement?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. I will now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? Yeah, all right.
Sure. I'll take a start at this. First off, I appreciate the public comment. Sounds like maybe we'll work on some things, make sure that we are able to get the right information from our citizens, so we'll be working on that, it sounds like, and appreciate that. I think where I met on this one is, as was stated earlier, we're working from a situation where the state voters have mandated this, and I'm in concurrence with the staff about the, their recommendations for locations for the healing centers and for the businesses, so I'm finding myself in support of the ordinance this evening.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt, can I?
I don't have much to add to that. I agree. I think, you know, the state has done what it's done, and we have a deadline. I think the staff has been thoughtful in how they put it together, and I appreciate the making sure that we're not over-restricting so we don't leave ourselves open to lawsuits. So I would be in support of this as well.
Thank you. Working my way down the line, maybe we'll just do that.
I'm also in support of the ordinance. It does seem like we have very tight parameters for where things can go and when they can operate, so it seems like a reasonable proposal to me, and I will be in support.
Thank you. Commissioner Choi?
Thank you, Chair. I think staff has been put in a tough position with this, with the timelines being passed down from the state and not really having the opportunity to fully vet maybe as much of this as they could have, given a more desirable timeline. I, I think viewing that is probably where some of my questions I, I, I think viewing that is probably where some of my questions come from about, you know, how, how should this, that is quite frankly, even at the state level, still relatively undefined, really be categorized and integrated into a municipal code to be treated fairly and appropriately and correctly? And I, I think quite frankly, I'm a little bit torn because I know that there is the timeline and the deadline looming on what municipalities are required to do and I feel like there's more information and research and deliberateness that, that has probably afforded the subject. So I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Commissioner Bangs?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the background and it seems we've done a, what you could describe as a reasonable level of research, given the time and the lack of comparables. I understand the sentiment that we don't wanna be overly restrictive, but I would hope council will be perhaps more restrictive with a view to revisiting that later than less restrictive and regretting the, the decision. I think there's a, there's a lot of considerations, transportation being one, you know, as you made clear. Individuals that perhaps go through this treatment and then should not be behind the wheel. Consideration to locations near transportation links, public transportation, et cetera, should, should perhaps be a consideration as well. Particularly these late night hours as well is a concern. But I should probably be voting in favor, given the need to, to vote for something, but hopefully council will be perhaps a little more restrictive.
Any additional reactions, deliberations? No, I, I think it is, it's a strange position we find ourselves in due to the fact that it was the voters and the state that passed it and then the state that's pushed it forward and why we have to have an ordinance that addresses this on this timeline. I think staff has done a great job of finding all that is out there, right? It's kind of, we're all stuck in the egg mode. There's not a lot of chickens because we're all trying to come up with it on the fly. So I think it draws a fairly conservative line, actually restrictive line, without exposing us to any potential legal problems. So I appreciate where you've brought it to and find myself in support of it at this time. Any other thoughts, deliberations? No, all right. I would call for a motion.
I move approval of Resolution Number 11, Series 2024, a resolution recommending approval of an ordinance amending the Louisville Municipal Code to allow and regulate natural medicine businesses.
Yes.
Second?
Thank you. Second, we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bangs?
Approved.
Commissioner Troy?
Abstain.
Commissioner Basket?
Support.
Commissioner Morley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Chair Brown Eyes?
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving into our next item of business. We're gonna begin this evening with a brief recap by staff. And I'll read the script here in a moment and then we'll move back into the public comment period. Just as a side note, if you filled out a card last month for public comment to speak to this Coal Creek issue, then we still have your cards. If you did not fill out one, please go ahead and fill out one. If you ceded your minutes last month, please honor that. What's that? Oh, we don't have cards at all? Oh. Who? Already spoke. Oh, okay, so we need to request that you fill out cards for this month. Got it. Okay. All right, thanks. Somehow I missed that. Sorry about that. All right, I will now reopen the public hearing on request for a preliminary P U D, preliminary plat and land use exhibit amendment rezoning and special review use for 1032, 1034 and 1040 East South Boulder Road. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials. Thank you. And provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. We've already had the presentation by city staff. We'll have a short recap of that this evening. The applicant has already provided their presentation. We are in the middle of public, public comment where members of the public who have joined the meeting in person, by computer or telephone, may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony. It's not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, deny or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your name and city of residence. Does anyone participating in the hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none, thank you. Do we have notification?
Notice was satisfied on the first public hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again, commissioners, Matt, Planning Department. So just as, we'll, we'll do a brief recap of what the proposal is with, with some additional information that may be pertinent for commission and the residents that are here tonight. So this is a continuation from the September 12th hearing, which was an approval of Resolution 10, Series 2024, recommending approval of the Coal Creek Village Preliminary P U D, Preliminary Plat and Special Review Use and an ordinance rezoning portions of the property and a land use exhibit amendment. So again, just a quick recap of the proposal. The request is for the approval of a preliminary P U D and plat for 188 dwelling units and 13,530 square feet of commercial space on 10.7 acres that the property highlighted in the exhibit on the slide. The rezoning would be from commercial, community, mixed use and residential medium density to residential mixed use, which the majority of the property is currently zoned. The rezoning would require an amendment to the land use plan, Exhibit A, that was adopted with the Highway 42 revitalization plan and the mixed use district overlay. And then the special review use would be required to allow a multi-family use on the ground floor of a building in the M U R Zone District. The rezoning would be for the northeast and east side of the site from C C M U to M U R. This map depicts the current zoning designations and configurations on the site. That would also include a rezone of the southwest portion of the site from R M or residential medium density to M U R. Just as another reminder, in 2013, this property was rezoned from commercial business to M U R and C C M U. That rezone satisfied the mandatory rezone requirement in accordance with the Highway 42 revitalization plan and the mixed use district overlay. So again, this is a discretionary rezone request as the mandatory rezone requirement was already satisfied in 2013. The application includes a preliminary plat, which would subdivide the existing 10.7 acre site. It would include 60 townhome lots, which would allow for the fee simple sale of those individual units. There are four outlots, which will include drainage and detention areas, utility areas, private streets and open space and parks. Two private parks are included totaling 23,258 square feet in size. And then the city will accept 1.2 acres of right-of-way dedication to allow for the construction of Front Street and Cannon Circle through the site and then some additional improvements directly adjacent to South Boulder Road. The P U D or the Planned Unit Development, the Site Development Plan proposes 60 townhomes. Again, those would be for sale units. 96 apartments dispersed amongst four buildings. Two of those buildings are mixed use buildings with retail and commercial uses on the ground floor. They're central to the site, directly adjacent to South Boulder Road. Again, that includes 13,534 square feet of commercial space. Front Street and Cannon Circle would be constructed and connected with this project. You can see the, the extent of the new construction in blue highlighted on the P U D. Those new streets would include detached sidewalks and tree lawns. There's also detached sidewalks and tree lawns throughout the private drives on the site. 23,000 square feet of park space and 316 parking spaces proposed for the use. So this is, I have a couple new slides to present this evening and this is based on comments that we received subsequent to the last planning commission hearing and then further discussions we've had with, with residents. So staff would like to provide some, some additional brief analysis on the traffic impact study and the transportation master plan. So, so the data used in the traffic study that was required for this development was collected in November of 2022. Weekday morning and evenings between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. and then Saturday midday peak hours were monitored for data that was presented in the study. The existing traffic counts were utilized to determine background traffic volumes and are taken into account for future traffic projections based on existing and anticipated roadway improvements. This includes the assumption that the front street connection would be completed and then provide a direct route to and from South Boulder Road for properties to the south. To consider anticipated trip generation for the project traffic, the study utilized the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. Site-generated traffic volumes were determined for weekday a.m. peak hour, weekday p.m. peak hour, then again that Saturday midday peak, which assumed the development would include 188 dwelling units and then that 13,000 square feet of retail and commercial space. So based on the location of the site and the fact that it's within walking distance of the Louisville, the middle school, Fairview Montessori, the sports complex and other commercial uses in the area, a 5% multimodal reduction was applied to all land uses when determining anticipated traffic counts for project traffic. The development as proposed and based on the traffic study is expected to generate a total of 1,883 new vehicle trips on, on the adjacent roadway network over the course of an average weekday. The exhibit that you see displayed here on the screen is from the traffic impact study and it's reflective of the year 2029 traffic totals at full buildout of the development. And you can see Area 4, which is highlighted here. This has been obviously an area of discussion and concern amongst residents. This would be the front street connection where it connects directly to Little Italy. Calls out the total vehicles per hour and the movements of those vehicles. So you can see I highlighted what those vehicles per hour are at the front street connection. So the first number in the applicant's traffic engineer can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but the first number would be a.m. peak hour, second number, p.m. peak hour, third number, Saturday midday peak. So you can see southbound traffic on, on Front Street from South Boulder Road down through Little Italy would be six, five and four. Those would be vehicles per hour that are anticipated with background traffic and then also the, the projected development. You can see the, the turning diagram with the turning movements and those are directly related to coming in and out Harper Street, going south on Front or going north all the way through Front. So this is, again, the year 2029 traffic total that was presented in the, in the traffic study. We also want to take some time to address the Transportation Master Plan or the T M P as it's referred to. So the plan was adopted by city council in October of 2019 and includes goals and recommendations focused on implementing and maintaining a balanced transportation neck, network and system in the city. The plan touches on a variety of, of issues and challenges, including housing and demographics, safety, connectivity and multimodal transportation options, with a focus on providing extensive multimodal transportation options and then also increasing safety for those modes of transportation. So staff have reviewed the proposal, apologize, against the T M P and have not found that the development is in conflict with the Transportation Master Plan. In fact, have found the proposal is in line with several, several policies of the Transportation Master Plan, specifically Policy One, Great Streets, which states that streets should include safe and inviting facilities for all ages and abilities and modes of transportations. The, the public streets are designed to accommodate pedestrians with detached sidewalks. There are no bike lanes on, on the street, but the road may be able to accommodate shared bicycle facilities, which is acceptable via the, the Transportation Master Plan on roadways with low speed and low volumes, which again, based on the traffic study, we anticipate Front Street to have low speed and low volume. It's also worth noting that Front Street, as it's proposed, is designed with a 30-foot flow line to flow line dimension. So that would be inside curb to inside curb. And that's obviously a relatively narrow street. For example, Front Street through Little Italy right now is actually designed at a 32-foot flow line to flow line. So the street running through Front is actually a bit more narrow and then curvilinear as well. The connection to Front Street will also provide access to a new bus stop for the Dash Route, the Dash R T D Route on South Boulder Road. Part of the proposal includes a new, a new bus stop with facilities. So Policy Three of the Transportation Master Plan is related directly to transit-oriented developments. This isn't necessarily a transit-oriented development, but, you know, the intent of the policy is to support the creation of compact, walkable, pedestrian-oriented projects in mixed use neighborhoods. Again, this is one of the few mixed use districts we have in the city, which is identified in the Transportation Master Plan. And those neighborhoods are intended to be centered around areas with frequent bus stop systems. And so the Dash Line, again, is right there on South Boulder Road. That's the primary transit service that exists within the city of Louisville. Those street connections, again, also include those pedestrian improvements. So additional sidewalk connections, detached sidewalk connections north through the site and then east out to Highway 42. And there's also additional pedestrian improvements adjacent to Highway 42 on the site. And so we'll wrap up the, the new information there and then the recap. And so just as a recap of what the recommendation was, staff recommended approval of the ordinance rezoning portions of the Caledonia Place subdivision plat from C C M U, which is Commercial Community Mixed Use, and R M Residential Medium Density to M U R Residential Mixed Use and amending Exhibit A, Land Use Exhibit, referenced in Louisville Municipal Code, Chapter 1714. We also recommended approval of Resolution 10, Series 2024, for approval of the Coal Creek Village Preliminary P U D and plat with the following conditions. It's that the applicant worked with staff in the final P U D process to redesign the proposed sidewalk directly adjacent to the development on South Boulder Road. That the final P U D comply with Colorado Senate Bill 24005, which will prohibit local governments from allowing the installation of non-functional turf. And then in the final P U D process, the applicant shall provide all necessary evidence to support their request to satisfy the inclusionary housing provisions of L M C Section 1776, including a voluntary alternative agreement or other agreed-upon options to satisfy in accordance with L M C Section 1776050. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Well, then go ahead and reopen the public hearing again. Please limit yourself to the three minutes and state your name and city of residence. Again, here, why don't we just re-add the addenda to public hearing or public record for this, for this issue? With a motion, please, Addendum One.
I move to add addenda one from this evening's packet into the record for this item.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Can we begin with the, if you can begin with the first person, then also on deck?
First person is Laurel Segrelo, who's got pulled time. And second, Bob Toft Taft.
I'm gonna use my three minutes and Tammy Cantrell's three minutes for six minutes.
Great.
Okay.
And can you begin with name and then also get close enough to the microphone? We can-
I'll do my best, yeah. I am Laurel Segrelo, Danof Segrelo. I live on Front Street in the block in question that we're talking about. My husband and I bought there 10 years ago, knowing that both sides of Little Italy would be developed. And the D-Lo development happened pretty quick after we- would be developed, and the D-Lo development happened pretty quick after we moved in. And we really, really appreciated y'alls or whoever, you know, if it wasn't this board that helped offset the street and make it a not a throughway. Those things really maintain the integrity of our block of Front Street. And we're just asking for the same consideration now as we look at the other side. You know, the current conditions of Lewisville, when there was a train station happening, when Front Street could go through, those things made sense to connect it to South Boulder Road. Those are not the conditions now. It's super frustrating that there is no traffic study past the Little Four on his map, because that's where we all live, and that's where the middle school traffic is, and that's where the new D-Lo traffic is. It no longer makes sense. You're not solving any problem by routing traffic down a street that ends at Griffith, that ends at a railroad crossing, that ends at Lewisville traffic at 8:45 and 3:45 every day, middle school traffic. So, you know, all three of my kids walked down Front Street to get to LMS and home every day. Now I watch the next generation of kids in my neighborhood walk down Front Street right past my house to get to school and back. If we're adding 188 units next door, it's a good guess that there's going to be a fair amount more children walking down Front Street to get to, to get to the middle school, and they don't just walk, they do bike, and they do skateboard, and the adding traffic to it is a safety issue. We did have a meeting with Markel, the elder is missing, which I'm disappointed about. They say they don't need Front Street. They said it's the city asked them to put Front Street through. And when we had a meeting with the city and they said, well, we need it because the traffic is messed up on 42 and South Boulder Road, and so it has to dump somewhere else. Well, the, asking existing residents, asking a historic neighborhood, asking the middle school area to take on the problem, which A already exists and then is going to be exacerbated by, you know, hundreds of more cars every day, is really unfair and not a good plan. There is no traffic study past that Four. Like I said, there's no traffic study on Front Street or Harper Street or Griffith or Main and Griffith or anywhere around the middle school, which is, if you live in the area, you don't need a traffic study to know 8:45, you got to give yourself 10 extra minutes, 3:45, you got to give yourself 10 extra minutes, and you can't turn left on Griffith onto 42 unless it's late at night. So it's not a solution. It seems to me that the, you know, planners who don't have any ties to Lewisville really and the developers who are going to put the money in their pockets and go elsewhere should be the people who are helping to fix the traffic problems in these areas rather than dump it onto an already problematic spot. Beyond that, there is, I'm really hoping that you guys will use your position tonight to keep this from passing until we have more information, until there is a traffic study about the neighborhood that you're asking to dump all these cars into. The responsibility should really fall, in my mind, to the city and to the developer to be the ones who are creatively and financially solving the problem of the traffic on South Boulder Road and 42. So it feels negligent to push that, that traffic, push the problem into our neighborhood without any knowledge, without any understanding of what that will do. I don't agree with the master plan that was just interpreted. No bike lanes, kids ride bikes. We're adding a bus stop? That's not a helpful solution. He said himself this is not a transit-oriented development. So, you know, some of us can't help but notice that the wall has been painted over, over here, and we're wondering what that is about. You know, online, it says that Lewisville's mission statement is that it's dedicated to providing a vibrant, healthy community with the best small-town atmosphere. Our commitment is to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life in our community. What we're talking about by getting rid of Front Street as a historic neighborhood street is the opposite to all of those values or missions or whatever you want to call them. I don't understand why they're gone. So please don't approve this plat tonight. If you have to, please do it with conditions that take out Front Street and the alley and these, these things that really, really affect not only our way of life, but also the historic value of one of Lewisville's oldest neighborhoods. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm not sure from the staff perspective, when somebody does do a six-minute, do we need to get a card from the other person also for record-keeping purposes or?
We just to make, we just need to make sure they're present.
Present, okay.
And then note that.
Okay.
Make sure, yes.
Thanks. All right. Next up and on deck?
Bob Taft. Yep. Followed by Sam Rizzo.
Hi, my name is Bob Tofti, and I live in Lewisville. I'm a 48-year resident of Little Italy and a 16-year member of the Revitalization Commission. And while I'm not speaking for the commission, I can tell you that both Miners Field and Little Italy neighborhoods, maintaining their historical character was prominent in our early meetings of the Revitalization Commission. It was very important. Several years ago, there was a proposal floated to extend Lee Street through the Miners Field neighborhood to connect with Pine Street. And it was eventual, the connection was to help the D-Lo neighborhood get to downtown, basically. And that connection would have adversely affected the Miners Field neighborhood. Residents spoke up, and the city council wisely listened and rejected the idea, and I believe that that precedent should be upheld in this case. It's very similar. You're taking a development, moving traffic through a historic, one of the two historic neighborhoods on the east side of the railroad tracks, and there just isn't a reason for it. And it would certainly negatively impact the entire Little Italy neighborhood. I just, if you've, if you've driven, and I know many of you have, past the middle school, I rode my bike there from Boulder this afternoon, there had to be 30 e-bikes exiting the middle school. They're everywhere. They're on sidewalks, they're on the street. There was, as I pulled up coming south on Main Street, there were five cars stopped waiting to make either a left-hand turn or to go into the middle school. It will be a disaster. This is only the beginning of the e-bike revolution. This is one year into it, really, in my mind, and I just feel like that the traffic studies, as was stated earlier, need to be done on Harper and Griffith. The D-Lo East development is going to come online, you're aware of that. It's going to impact Griffith even greater, and I do think that it's the responsibility of the city or the developer to somehow fix South Boulder Road and Highway 42. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Sam Rizzo, followed by Andy Moss.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Sam Rizzo. I live in Lewisville. I know that a lot of these wonderful people have talked about like how it's affecting, you know, this development would affect them living in Little Italy. I actually, I work at the Snarf sandwiches at South Boulder and Cannon right there. I live further away, so I'm less concerned about living and stuff, although I am concerned for them. I know that from a business perspective, though, I can't speak for, you know, the company or the store itself, but I can speak for like myself, and I can speak unofficially for our general manager Spencer, who runs the store. I think the business side of it, I don't think it's super good. I don't actually think that, or I guess Spencer doesn't think that it's going to add a whole lot of business. I know that as part of their plan, they want to do the kind of like first floor has shops and stuff, and then the next three floors have apartments. And while that all sounds well and good, I think that especially in other regions around here, that doesn't tend to work. There's a lot of those at, you know, kind of in Broomfield and around the Flat Irons Mall, and a lot of the businesses on those bottom floors have gone under, especially after COVID with, you know, a lot more e-commerce. In Westminster on like 88th and Sheridan, like where the Westminster Mall used to be, they built a lot of those recently, like in 2018, 2019, and they couldn't even fill the bottoms, you know, with shops and businesses and stuff. And so I think that that's definitely a kind of dying business technique. I know that they've talked a lot about traffic, so I won't drill anything into the ground. The planners kind of amendment that they gave us this afternoon was, I think, cleared up some things with me. I will say that the north-south portion of Cannon currently serves as kind of overflow parking for Snarfs and some staff parking, and I'm guessing that that wasn't taken into account. I don't think that it would be really bad, but I do think that, you know, that would no longer be able to used as overflow parking or staff parking. I question the applicants. I want to know, because they never really mentioned it. They got the 51-unit PUD accepted a couple of years ago, and now they want 188 units. And I don't know, I feel it might be strong, but I think it's a little greedy to add so many and not take the opportunity given, but add so many. Let's see, I've got, oh, I didn't like the applicant's use of a lot of red herrings. I took a quote specifically where they said 74% of residents couldn't buy a single-family home. I don't think that that actually really applies to like, it maybe is a case, makes the case for more apartments, but I don't think that it does anything for their own application, that statistic. And I felt like there were several of those in there. I think, I'll use the last just couple of seconds. I think that the stuff, a lot of their, and the planners, but, you know, the applicant's planning is around the Highway 45 revitalization project, but that hasn't started yet, and so I do have concerns about if it doesn't start for another like five or 10 years, then, you know, it's five or 10 years of kind of worse traffic that the projections weren't expecting as well. But thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Andy Moss and then Nick Fesmire.
Hello. My name is Andy Moss, and I live on the corner of Harper and Front, right where the intersection would, in question, would enter. And as my neighbor mentioned earlier, the traffic study that was conducted is potentially flawed because it doesn't always take into consideration anything beyond that neighbor, behind that intersection. So, yeah, you're going to count the cars there, but it doesn't include the cars moving down Griffith. As you may know, we have a number of halfway houses on our street, so the traffic is not representative necessarily of the way traffic moves on a nine-to-five. Like this, this study, it says it was done at 7:00 AM until sometime in the evening. I didn't catch exactly when, but those meetings awfully go well into the evening, and I come home on Harper Street very late. And when I come, I come off of 42 and turn right, I have to go very, very slowly, or I might hit a parked car because they're parked all different directions on the street. And, you know, it's already a disaster in that area. And so that's my issue with that. You know, the traffic study's starting at 7:00 AM. People living in the new development who are going to be going to Denver, who have to leave early, they're going to be on the road before 7:00 AM, so they're going to take the shortest way out of the neighborhood to get to 36, which is going to be right down Front Street, right outside my door, and kids start moving towards school at that point. The issue with the e-bikes, my daughter goes to school at LMS, and the amount of e-bikes is shocking. At some point, you guys are probably going to have to deal with that issue because, you know, some poor child is going to get run over by a, probably by an e-bike going 30 miles an hour down the street. On another issue, one of my main concerns was I was never contacted by the current developer nor the city concerning the right-of-way behind my property, which is not platted, and it's been a right, it's been like in use by my neighbors for 60 years, but it doesn't really exist on any city plans. And nobody's really said, well, what's going to happen here? It's just sort of assumed that people are going to cut through my yard. And that was never really brought to my attention until recently. Let's see here. One of my other concerns is, you know, we're moving towards a, people relying on GPS to get everywhere, and when the traffic is backed up at 42 and South Boulder Road, GPS is electronic, it's not a human, it's going to tell people to turn right on Front Street. If there's cars stopped, it knows that, so it tells people to turn right at the soonest intersection, Front Street through Little Italy. And these are people who don't even live in the new development or live in Little Italy. It's just random cars. So I ask you to reconsider, you know, some of these things that, you know, it's, there's a lot at stake here, and it isn't just, you know, a bunch of people like, we don't want development. That's not what we're saying. We need to take into consideration the history, the residents, the safety, lots of other stuff that their plan doesn't really incorporate, as I see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next is Nick Fesmire and then Jody Ash.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to this community and for taking time out of your day to listen to concerned citizens. My name is Nick Fesmire. Been a resident of Little Italy for about three years now. Our front door will be facing this proposed development. My one-year-old daughter will be raised in this house, and while I do support new and affordable housing, my fear is that this development brings an unnecessary danger to the community. The connection to Front Street routing traffic from 188 units in front of Lewisville Middle School and through our narrow streets presents an incredibly dangerous scenario. I personally walked with my wife, daughter, and dog weekly through the already existing crosswalks and have been hit multiple times, or almost hit multiple times. There was a pedestrian crossing sign that has been removed several times by the D-Lo development that, I don't know if it's been taken out by cars or what, but it's gone. You know, there's no raised sidewalks, there's no speed bumps, and by the developer's own parking capacity at 316, now there will be over 300 cars added to this mix. What is it going to take for the city to take this seriously? I mean, seriously, is it going to take a child getting hit and killed on our city's streets? At a minimum of 200 cars per day, the latest traffic study already doesn't support this plan. If I recall from the last meeting, the study was done back in 2019. I do appreciate that we have a '22 study, but five, six years is outdated. Lewisville has grown exponentially in that time. Why are we relying on an outdated traffic study for current development? The critical intersection at Griffith and Front, where a majority of the developer traffic will be routed to heading west, was not included in any of these studies. Every single effect downstream of this development needs to be studied and accounted for. Banking on a potential future development, the improvement of Highway 42 is also not a reliable traffic solution, as no work has started on the South Boulder intersection. If this development happens before the Highway 42 revitalization, we, the citizens, are in a worse position than when we started. The citizens. Using the previous example of cars heading west to Boulder, Little Italy will now bear the burden of poor planning. Cars speeding through our quiet neighborhood, then crossing an active train track multiple times a day in use, and then directly in front of Lewisville Middle School is not a solution. When a train is passing and traffic backs up, Little Italy will be at a standstill. Front Street, the proposed addition, will be at a standstill. While we're currently renting this development and its influence on our community will have a long-lasting impact on mine and others' decisions to live in Lewisville going forward. It will impact existing school and pedestrian traffic, not to mention community events such as farmers markets and summer concerts. You know, there were several comparisons in the last meeting between the previously approved PUD and this proposal, but comparing 51 units to 188 is comparing apples to grapefruit. By comparing the, by more than tripling the occupancy, there are no similarities now. There's none. There's none. And with micro-town homes at nearly a thousand dollars per square foot, I'm not sure how that really responds to community affordability. Lastly, another implication of this addition that I have yet to hear from is light pollution and its effects on the existing wildlife and insects. There are several red-tailed hawks that I see daily in that area, several. Please do not approve this preliminary plat until its citizen, developers, and planning department can come to a compromise. As it currently stands, this design is not in harmony with the historic neighborhood of Little Italy or its residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jody Ash and then Tamak Grant.
My name is Jody Ash. I live at fourteen thirty Front Street in Louisville. And thank you for your service to Louisville. I do appreciate it. I've lived in Louisville for nearly twenty years and in Little Italy for eight. I own my home. I am in love with our neighborhood. And my neighbors are a fabli- fabulous bunch. And it's a very special place to call home. And I chose this place after much, much consideration of where I wanted to be in the world. Our family relishes the quiet, sleepy neighborhood we intentionally chose to live in due to the solitude it offers and our respectful neighbors, away from the bustle of downtown, but still the old-town feel. Our streets are where children play. We have neighborhood block parties, cats roam, and wildlife abounds. It really truly is the perfect place to live at the moment. I understand additional housing is important and sacrifices do need to be made. But please do not make our neighborhood streets a thorough, a thorough road, through road. It will destroy our quality of life and drastically alter where we call home, including our safety and the historic value. When these types of roads become through roads, they often become racetracks for people taking shortcuts. LMS traffic on Griffith is already terrible at the school, and adding to that would be more dangerous for the children. Another factor to consider is Harper and Griffith are extremely challenging to get onto Highway forty-two during traff- high-traffic times. Please keep the entrances and exits to the main roads of South Boulder and Highway forty-two. Louisville is known for family-friendly, small-town character. We have so much historic value. I really ask that you would review the TMP. It does not include the Front Street connection, and it actually supports the opposite. I also would request that you collaborate with the Historic Preservation Committee. And I am concerned that the traffic study does not include LMS or Harper, you know, and all of the other outlets that come into our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Tamak Grant and then Jeremy Carlson.
Oh, thank you. I just downloaded.
And we'll jump online.
Is it possible for me to share my time with Mike Putney if he's online? I don't want to prevent anybody else from talking. It seems like I've, I've misplaced my email that I wanted to read from, so I'll try to just speak ad lib here. One of the reasons, I wanted to bring up a different reason why I really believe strongly you should reject this proposal, and that's because it doesn't include a public land dedication. Um, our Title sixteen requires a fifteen, I think a fifteen percent public land dedication for residential developments. And, um, if you read the introduction to Chapter sixteen, it says that that applies to all, all, that, that the part of Chapter sixteen applies to all parts of, the title applies to all developments, whether they've been previously subdivided or not. And I understand that in this packet, um, you might want to ask for some more clarification from the planning staff. But, um, if you read the packet, it says that, um, the, um, I better pull, I better pull this up, but it's, it says that, um, if it has been pre, there's a little exception that says if an area has been previously subdivided and an adequate, um, public land dedication has been made at the time of that previous subdivision, then you are exempt from that public land dedication. And as Senior Planner Post prevented last time, this was previously subdivided back in eighteen nineties. And there was, so yes, it has been previously subdivided, but no, there was not an adequate public land dedication made at that time. So please look really carefully at this. Now, I understand, I, I emailed the planning staff and they responded that even though, that they didn't respond to me about whether or not it had been previously adequately, you know, there's adequate, um, public land dedication at the time. But they did say that this is based on precedent. There was a sep- there was another application based in twenty thirteen, and the twenty thirteen application was by a different applicant. We don't know the whole situation around that. And that exception is part and parcel to that twenty thirteen application. This is a new application, um, with new conditions, asking for a whole lot of different things. And so the public land dedication should apply. So, um, and not only is it the law and our municipal code, but it's also just the right thing to do. If you're going to put a lot of people into this area, they need to have green space to walk their dogs, to just feel good about life in general. And the most important thing that you guys are dealing with, with the comprehensive plan is that, you know, this is not a transit-oriented, oriented development, but rather, um, it's the only place left where we could possibly put passenger rail without using eminent domain to take over other previously developed properties or without taking our open space and coming up with an intergovernmental agreement with Louisville, Lafayette, and Boulder County. There's no other place available left. So I will really encourage you to not approve this and to require, because, and they send them back to the drawing board to add a public land dedication of at least fifteen percent. Um, I don't know if I have more time because I also, um, wanted to make a comment. Do I still have more time? I see it says zero.
Can we reset the clock?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to share something that, no, a lot of people are focusing on traffic, and I don't want to step on anybody else's toes, but I just wanted to address the rezoning issue as well. Is that okay? I'm going to just refer to my email real quick. There it is. Okay, yeah, um, I, I know that the planning staff has given you re, have cited codes and cited reasons why this does apply, why we can rezone this from commercial to commercial mixed use. Um, of course, I can't seem to find my notes now, but, um, there is a, let me see, I'm going to try to find it. There is a, um, okay, seventeen forty-four fifty says, um, it's, it's our declaration of policy for rezoning. And for the purpose of establishing and maintaining sound, stable, and desirable development within the city, the rezoning of land is to be discouraged. So the, the planning staff are, are, and you, are, are asking you to agree that it meets the exception to that. And that would be that this area has changed significantly. Um, since it was last rezoned in twenty sixteen, it has not changed significantly. And, um, and also the memo in the packet from CBRE dated September twelfth of twenty twenty-two describes a downturn in retail and office immediately following the pandemic, and it shows a rebound in twenty twenty-two. This should also be, this cannot be used as evidence that commercial is not viable in this area. So I think that if you look closely, you might find that this doesn't really meet the criteria for rezoning. Thanks.
Thank you. And just as a point of clarification, was the person that was mentioned that may or may not be online?
He is online.
He is online, okay, great, thanks. Thank you.
So next is Jeremy Carlson and then Josh Cooperman.
Hi, my name's Jeremy Carlson. Um, I live on Lafarge Avenue in Old Town. So, uh, overall, I am in support of the general concept of adding housing to this area. I think we need more housing. Um, I think the cost of housing in Louisville is just sort of skyrocketing, and it does seem like we need to fill in somewhere. Um, to me, this area seems like it has easy access to, uh, high-traffic roads and seems like a desirable candidate. A lot of people are mentioning that traffic is an issue and would be a major problem. And I can see, uh, a lot of their points. It seems to me that this plan might make sense if they also figured out ways to handle the traffic. And I would think that something like adding actual traffic lights, uh, at Griffith and Main and at Griffith and Highway forty-two might be a way to address that, uh, situation. But that would certainly be a lot of cost. I, I'm mixed about this. Uh, I, I think, um, maybe this, this plan seems like it doesn't quite, it's not transit-oriented enough. It maybe isn't really affordable enough. Um, and I'd like to see it improved on those fronts. So, um, I would probably say, keep working on this and seeing what you can get. Tamara's point, though, also about being the last possible spot for, uh, rail transit. Uh, one of the reasons we moved to Louisville was rail transit, and obviously it's still, it's out there and I don't know if it'll ever happen. But, boy, if we could still do that, I don't know if I'd want to take that off the table. So, um, that would also make me want to pause on this. So, uh, I came here sort of generally in support, but I think there's a lot of things to consider. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, so Josh Cooperman.
After, yeah.
John Dolittle, next? Did I hear that?
Oh, okay.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, no problem.
I didn't hear you correctly, I'm sorry.
Then we'll, we'll do Josh after this, he's online.
So John Dolittle first. Um, thank you to the commission for, for listening, uh, this evening. So many very articulate, um, expressions of concern. My husband and I own a home on Front Street and have for sixteen years now. Um, and I, I'm just going to reiterate, uh, a lot of what I've heard tonight. Generally understand the need for development. Um, I, I think the example of the miners' field issues, uh, was particularly apt in this case. Um, the, my biggest concern is the Front Street cut-through. Um, I, I agree that there are inherently traffic problems that are only going to be made significantly worse. Um, and that there is considerable more, um, study that needs to be done so that we can achieve a better balance of, uh, meeting the needs of development and, um, existing patterns of use. So I encourage you to, um, pause and take the time to do more study before a decision is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving online.
Okay, so Josh Cooperman and then Cindy Bedell.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. Uh, I live in Louisville. I want to begin by saying that I'm generally supportive, um, of this development. Uh, it provides varied residential, uh, types, uh, near business districts like South Boulder Road and downtown. Uh, it should be a walkable and bikeable, uh, development. Um, and it should support those business districts. And I was glad to hear that the developer plans to build the, the, uh, affordable units, uh, and not pay a fee in lieu. That said, uh, I think that there are a variety of issues, um, and questions that, that kind of remain about this development. So first of all, uh, I'm a little bit surprised about the, the amount of public engagement. Uh, so in, in particular, given the complexity of this, uh, this application, I wonder why it didn't go to a concept plan review that would seem like a good place to get some feedback. Uh, secondly, um, I was a little confused why staff didn't mention, um, our municipal code seventeen-point-fourteen-point-zero-one-zero-B, in relation to mitigating impacts on Little Italy. Right, it says that, uh, we should strengthen and enhance adjacent residential neighborhoods while protecting them from potential adverse impacts associated with new developments. And then a third thing, um, I, I think you should ask a question about the status of the right-of-way for even connecting Front Street. Um, I, uh, from what I've heard, that's still in question. Um, and I think you should revisit, uh, what's recommended in the transportation master plan. All right, I wanted to, um, make, focus on one other issue, which has come up a little bit in, in previous comments, um, which is about natural features and open space. Um, so the, in the application materials, as I read it, they kind of write off any natural features, uh, in this area. I think that's completely wrong. Um, there are, there are definitely natural features there, um, especially in the areas that are proposed for rezoning. Um, and in Section sixteen-point-sixteen-point-zero-one-zero-D, uh, it says that natural, historical, and archaeological sites and vegetation of the area, including trees, must be preserved to the extent possible. Seems like that's not happening whatsoever. Um, and I, I'd like to point out that, you know, this area actually is part of a wildlife corridor that stretches all the way across Louisville, from Davidson Mesa to Harper Lake to Coyote Run to Lake Park to Enrietto Park, along the Good Hugh Ditch, through Coal Creek Village, and then to Harnley-Lascota. So I think it's quite important to preserve, um, something in this site. Uh, so I ask you to scrutinize the staff's finding about the land dedication, uh, especially with, uh, natural features in mind. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe we have at least one other person online. Okay, should.
Cindy Bedell and then Wendy Apple.
Oh, hi, I'm Cindy Bedell. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I feel so far away from the microphone. Um, I live in war-two Louisville. And one thing I appreciate about Louisville is I can get down here in ten minutes from my house in Hillsborough West and then go on to do something else because our traffic is not too bad yet, but it's going to get worse, right? So one thing I want to say about this project is what I saw last time during the presentation was the traffic study predicts an overall and an eastbound F for fail at South Boulder Road and Highway forty-two in the future, not just poor. I think the applicant said poor, but it's really an F. Um, although a waiver request for less coverage, for less lock coverage requirement on one or more of the blocks is great, please add a condition for more public land dedication and green space. Twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight square feet of parks, slightly more than half an acre, is not adequate for a development of this size. And are these parks, are these private or public land dedication? And as other speakers have said, you have the power to recommend more open space on a development application. I think if you look at municipal code sixteen-point-sixteen-point-zero-one-zero, you'll find a reference for that. This proposed mixed-use development with one hundred and eighty-eight housing units, which is an increase from the currently approved fifty-one dwellings, is too many additional housing units, and the overall proposed mixed-use density will bring too much traffic. So we need to scale the development back. And also the imagined architecture, which I don't know if you can comment on or not, but I think it doesn't fit our small-town feel. We should require more attractive architecture with gable roofs and a style that fits our town. And especially, this is adjacent to historic Little Italy, so that modern farmhouse, three-story, flat style just, is just going to clash with our existing, um, neighborhoods in that area. Um, in reference to the housing plan, we're already thirty-three percent attached dwellings. So to me, that seems pretty balanced for our city. I like the deed restriction and the inclusionary housing components of this development, but in general, please don't confuse high-density, attached with affordable. Many of the new attached residential units being constructed in Louisville are luxury units that are more expensive than some of our existing single-family residential homes. Finally, I just want to comment, we're still under our old comprehensive plan from twenty thirteen, which lists small-town character, small-town atmosphere. And the new comp plan vision statement for twenty twenty-five talks about ev- statement for 2025 talks about evolve and adapt to change. And I noticed the old vision statement, which is still in place, has been erased from the wall since somebody mentioned it last time, and it's also been erased from the library wall. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Wendy Apple, and then Cynthia Corn.
Hi, I'm appreciating all of the comments, and I'll try not to be duplicative. I live here in Lewisville, in fact, I live on Griffith Street, so many of you have mentioned Griffith Street, and my concern is that we haven't even, the building has not yet started on the second part of D-Lo, I guess it's D-Lo East, so we don't even know what the traffic situation is going to be like, and the parking situation when that gets built and people move in, let alone 188-unit development. In addition to what everybody has already said, I've been here on Griffith Street for eight years, and it was kind of quiet when I first moved in, and since then, it's gotten noisier and noisier and noisier. The turn lane from 42 channels, all sorts of traffic down Griffith and straight to the middle school, lots of drop-off, lots of pickup, the backup when the train goes by, and, and the air pollution has gotten worse and worse. And I get, every single day, I get alerts on my phone telling me the air quality is bad, and if you don't have to go outside, you shouldn't. The planes are now going over constantly, straight over our area, starting at 6:00 AM into the evening. And so it's just become untenable from a noise pollution standpoint, an air pollution standpoint, and also for the wildlife. I've seen great horned owls and all sorts of hawks and many other birds, and I'm wondering what's going to happen there as well. And so I'm concerned about the danger to pedestrians and the, and when does it stop, really? When does it stop? So as a general rule, I'm not against development, but I'm against being smart about it. You know, water seeks its own level. You add an additional lane to a road, and it just fills right up. And that's what I'm concerned about with development, and I feel like we have to find another way, and this isn't the answer. I mean, we're dealing with climate change now, and we're dealing with a horrible air pollution situation on the front range, and adding all these additional cars to the road isn't going to help. So I've said my piece, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Cynthia Corn, and then Carl Cantrell.
Yeah, Kato Rodriguez is yielding his time to me, I spoke last time. Hi, Cynthia Corn, I live in Lewisville. I think the applicant's presentation last time that marked the communities and didn't label Little Italy. All of these were, neighborhoods were marked, and they didn't mark Little Italy. There was a blank on that part of it. What Josh said about engagement, you know, even this last week, there were discussions among the group, specific questions around drainage, that the developer does not want to share with the community. There's a lot of red flags that all are in the black and white of the code. There doesn't need to be a rush. There's a lot of people here advocates for development. I remember in 99 and 2000 going to the restaurant that was on, in the car, right on the spot. We all have wanted to see something, go back in there, but I think it's been referenced, and even by commissioners, that this increase from 50 to 188 is bizarre. Like, I don't know how else, you know, it's just odd. Actually, I've thought more about the 300, 350-square-foot units, but innovative in what we're going for, that in and of itself isn't bad, it's making me think differently, but 188 units down this street, and as soon as, so the reason to deny the preliminary PUD and plat is because the streets are determined at this stage. And we would need to, as soon as any construction happens, we would need a light at Griffith and Main. We would need lights at Cannon Circle and Highway 42. And if you take a left and head south on 42, it's hard enough to turn into Union Jack. If there's all this traffic going into there, it's going to be very strange if the other things haven't gone through. The other thing is, it was very insulting, frankly, and staff makes mistakes, and I think this staff knows that when the community is so appreciative. But it's a mistake to not show Griffith and Harper on the map about traffic, and that was a miss. That traffic was not analyzed and the channel, so then if you're going to go west, you're going to come down Front Street, you're going to go in front of the middle school and down Lafayette, and affect Lafayette all the way to Via Appia. And that traffic has not been studied. So there's a lot of reasons. It's too dense, Carl said it emotionally, the gentleman who lived there, has lived there the longest. This is just the wrong development wedged into our area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Carl Cantrell, and then Jason.
Yes, my, I inherited my home from my mother and my father with my brother, and I was a caretaker for my mother, and I sat there, and when I was watching her, I seen all the traffic going up and down Griffith Street at times, from one end to the other, they were stopped, especially when a train came by, they were, from one end to the other, it was stopped. And I was just thinking, nobody brought this up, what about getting first responders into that neighborhood if they need to? That's, I grew up here from 70s to the 90s, and I'd never seen traffic like this before, and I never thought about that until my parents were elderly and might need an ambulance at the time of all this traffic coming through. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
And Jason, and Rita Zamora after that.
And if we can get your last name too, please?
Oh, my last name's Farron, F-A-R-R-E-N. Yes, I, I've been living off of Harper Street, backed up to the development area for about eight years, going on nine, and I appreciate the wildlife in that area. People come out, photograph the hawks, and it's peaceful. I think it's peaceful for Lewisville to have these areas. I have concerns about the development, the amount of people, just the feel of Lewisville in general, and already see with more traffic and how it's routed, people flying up and down the street, and have concerns of just changing that small-town feel, and I know for me and my family, it's a peaceful place to unwind after a hard day, hard day's work, and to consider the amount of newcomers that would be in that area. We're not talking about just normal houses, we're actually, it's a high-density area, my understanding is. I just don't, I just don't feel it's a good fit, and that's, whether the roads can handle it or not. So I just want to share my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Rita Zamora.
Hi, thank you very much, council, for all your time and your consideration with this. I am Rita Zamora, I live at the corner of Griffith and Cannon Street. I have lived here for eight years, and I am part of the newer D-Lo development, the townhomes that are here. I love our neighborhood, I love getting to know our neighbors in Little Italy, in our community. We have an amazing, diverse group of people here. We have elderly women who walk on Griffith in their, with their walkers. We have another woman that walks with a cane and her elderly dog. We have young kids, we have pets, and it's amazing. And I did want to share, I know we have a lot of traffic studies and all of this data, but I live here on the corner of Griffith and Cannon, and since 2020, I have been writing to the city and the council about the safety concerns in this area. They heard me, they came out and put a traffic sign, crosswalk, and then they came a few years later and painted the lines, and I was really grateful. But I can tell you that that sign, the crosswalk sign, has been replaced at least five or six times, because it continues to get struck by vehicles. And I can tell you, every time that the sign is struck by a vehicle, because it sounds like a gunshot, and it catches my attention, I work from home, my husband works from home, so we're virtually at home 24/7, and I can tell you, every time the sign is struck, we are startled and alarmed, and we think it's a gunshot, and we go out, it's the traffic stop, it's the crosswalk sign again. And the city has come out and replaced it at least a half a dozen times. It was knocked down again, I've sent pictures to the city showing you the damage to the sign, saying, thank goodness this wasn't a pedestrian, because the middle-school kids go to Ziggy's Coffee, and then they ride their bikes, they zoom on their e-bikes, they are walking this crosswalk to get to Lewisville Middle School, and one of these days, heaven forbid, I hope it's not a human and not the crosswalk sign. The crosswalk sign was knocked down again a few months ago, and it's never been replaced. So I think that's an indication, these streets here are narrow, you cannot move these homes. This historic area of Little Italy is absolutely incredible, and I feel like it's not really being considered. It's like we're on the wrong side of the tracks, and nobody cares. So I know you have traffic studies, but I wanted to just voice and say, I live here on the corner, and it is a very hazardous situation already, I can't imagine adding the density that you're proposing, so please take that into consideration. Come visit our area, look at my previous emails, you can see the damage to the little person on the crosswalk sign, and hopefully that will continue to remain safe, and we can continue to enjoy this amazing neighborhood, even with our additional development that's coming on board, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else at this time? No? All right, we'll take a seven-minute break. We convene at 8:20. Thanks.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Thank you all. Per our standard procedure, we will now open it up for the applicant response and a closing statement.
Yeah, hi. Jason Markell, is out at 5723 Arapahoe in Boulder, Colorado. So am I responding to your questions, or?
You're responding to everything you've heard in the last, this meeting and last meeting.
Okay. So I wanted to, obviously, the, you know, big-ticket item, as you heard from, you know, many of the presenters, is the Front Street Connection. And so, you know, during this last 30 days, we had time to dig into this. And, you know, today, we also have our traffic engineer on Zoom. So, you know, we have our expert, you know, to answer any questions, specific questions on the matter. But in general, you know, we studied it both ways this last 30 days. And, you know, it was our understanding that staff, you know, wanted to make the connection, and, you know, good planning, you know, requires, you know, strong connections. And so throughout this process, we've always had the Front Street Connection made in our plan, and we think it's, you know, advantageous, you know, for the plan in general and the city, you know, for emergency responders and the various, you know, other reasons. But we also met with the neighbors a couple weeks ago, and we understand, you know, their concerns, and we sympathize with their concerns. And so, you know, with that being said, you know, we looked at the Front Street Connection, you know, as it pertained to the greater neighborhood. And we feel like there's plenty of capacity on Front Street with the connection being made. And so we went back and looked at that and saw the capacity, you know, without the subdivision, with the subdivision, and with Front Street being open. And it has the capacity, and it passes, and it's, you know, according to standards. So it works with it being open. Now, we studied it with it being closed, and, you know, it does work with the neighborhood, and we'd have to study it a little further, but it does work with the, you know, connection being closed. So either way, I think it's a successful subdivision, and it does work. So I think the reality is that we sympathize with the neighbors. We know staff's wishes and, you know, the city's wishes, and, you know, what constitutes a successful subdivision and successful planning. And so we're sort of stuck here, and we're looking for guidance, you know, from you all to, you know, shine a light on which direction we need to proceed. Because I think the reality is that the details and how we, you know, get to a compromise is, you know, in the final stages with traffic calming measures. And, you know, I think there's a good in-between between keeping it open and closing it off, that we can be creative enough, and we've done this in a lot of different subdivisions. So, you know, this is a pretty common issue that we have, you know, as developers and in the county and, you know, city, and, you know, we get this a lot. And we are a creative group, and we have a really creative traffic engineer. And so I know for a fact, just because we've done this, you know, many, many, many times, that we can come up with a creative solution and make it work for all parties involved. And so, you know, with that being said, I still think, you know, we need some guidance, you know, as to, you know, what your preferences are and how you want to see it and how you think it will shape the neighborhood. But with any of those recommendations, you know, we can take that and run with it, and we can work with the neighbors, we can work with staff, and we can put together a successful project. So that is something we've been able to do, you know, time and time again. And I'm very confident we can, you know, work with all parties and come up with a creative solution, you know, in final. And I think those details are, you know, a final PUD exercise with the necessary parties. So in closing, again, we have our experts. I have my planners. We have our engineers, and we have our traffic engineer. And so whatever questions you have, I think we have, you know, the team necessary here to answer anything. So I'll open that up to any questions.
Great. Thanks.
Where are we starting, Reed?
As needed. They'll be giving a final response and questioning time. If it's separate, if it's related, yeah, we can weave that in, yeah. Commissioner Baskett, please.
Could you please say more about the connection options? So you would truncate Front Street, construct it to serve the development, but it would not go through? Is that an option?
Yeah, if you're talking options, I mean, there's options for, you know, emergency vehicle access and pedestrian access. So that would be more of a closed-off connection. Because I think ultimately, we need fire trucks and ambulances and, you know, emergency vehicles to go through there. And, you know, I think bikes and pedestrians need to have, you know, access as well. So that would be, you know, one connection, I think, you know, one that the neighbors, you know, would be supportive of. You know, as it is right now, you know, we have, you know, a connection. And I think as we move into more of a final scenario where we're really digging in with staff and coming up with creative measures to, you know, either mitigate traffic. And so there's a bunch of different construct, you know, traffic mitigation techniques, you know, with raised crosswalks and neck downs and, you know, different things that we could, you know, provide, you know, to mitigate the, you know, either cut-through traffic or, you know, different, you know, ailments of traffic.
Follow on, directly to that.
Yeah, continue, yeah.
But you wouldn't be designing the street, would you? Did I hear it's a city project to do the street?
So we're working with the applicant on the street design. We have standards and guidelines, and they would have to build the street. And sometimes there's waivers to the guidelines. We have mixed-use standards, and we have other street standards. It's a complicated question. I do want to make sure, it might help the discussion if there are staff questions about, because I don't, I don't know if it's helpful for this to get too far.
Sure, yeah.
Too far in, because I'm hearing some discussion about preliminary, final, this works, it doesn't work. I have, I've got to say, with all respect, that we haven't received a traffic study to show other options. And I think we're concerned, from the staff level, if this street doesn't go through. We need to see that before we can advise you on if any alternatives work. So that's something that we talked about internally as staff. And so I think if you want, and again, as you all know, you're looking at the application in front of you. If you want, if the applicant wants to pursue an alternative application, we need additional technical studies. We need to think about that more thoroughly. So I just wanted to add that before you, you know, I think that might help the conversation moving forward, that there might be some disagreement about how to move forward.
Great. Thanks. Yeah. Right, we'll continue with this.
And on this, I hear what you're saying about needing more study, and you haven't seen anything that says that not having the connection works. Could you help me understand what it is about having that through road that is important? That's the piece I'm missing.
Right. So I think, I'm going to talk about a couple things here. So when we look at this development, and when you all look at the development, we have adopted design standards and guidelines. So it's the mixed-use development design standards and guidelines. There are, there's a section, and I can share that, I'm prepared to share that. It's all set up. It's general street and block layout standards. So it talks specifically about providing a gridded street network that implements the Highway 42 plan. So that's an adopted plan that we have. Our adopted ordinance and adopted design standards say all developments within this area, it's part of the city's vision for that. The reason you have a gridded street pattern is it helps distribute traffic. It actually can be more pedestrian-friendly if you implement it correctly. It could be more bicycle-friendly. If you think about, and in fact, the general street and block layout standard specifically references that we want a gridded street pattern like downtown Louisville. And if you think about what's one of the most friendly pedestrian places in Louisville, it is downtown, and that's largely because of the gridded street pattern. From a technical standpoint, what does it mean, could it work? I think we need to look at the distribution, the impact on the surrounding street network. If this isn't here, one of the issues is that cars leaving this development to go westbound into Boulder, and we don't think there'll be a lot of them, but if they do, you know, some of these movements provide their primary option. If you have specific questions, I do want, so we do have Cameron Folks, the city engineer. He's online. The applicant has their traffic engineer online. So I think it might be appropriate for each of them also to speak to what would work and wouldn't work as well.
Great. Thanks. Maybe, maybe we should, this is obviously a very big issue within all of this. Maybe we should invite your traffic engineer to speak to some of it at this time?
I think that'd be appropriate. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how to, or there's Carrie.
What's his name, or do you know what he's logged in as, or?
Carrie is on, and she is a host, I think. So I think she's able to converse.
Great.
Yeah, I can, I can converse. Carrie McDowell Schrader, owner of McDowell Engineering.
Excellent. Thanks. So as it relates to all these alternate potentials, what are your initial reactions, knowing that you haven't completed the study at this time?
Yeah, so basically, we just did some kind of preliminary what-if scenarios. And no, they aren't formalized into an updated traffic study. But the intent of it was just seeing, do we still have movement from the development with the restricted access? Because as you know, plans for access restriction is some of the driveways onto the arterial streets. And so the short version to the answer was yes, but I agree. I think it's something that we could talk through and see if we need to study that further. Big-picture-wise, though, as a traffic engineer, we do, like was said by staff, think that gridded street networks provide redundancy in the street network, provide safety, can have more capacity on narrower streets. So, but happy to look at alternatives and talk through that with staff. Also happy about some of the stuff that we looked at to the south. We did, I did take some preliminary looks at Griffith Street. When we originally scoped the project and looking at the areas that we needed to study for the traffic study, Griffith Street was not included. We were told to update an old study done by someone else, and that was not included. I did look at some of the current traffic numbers, and it's basically just kind of as the neighbors and residents of Little Italy has described, is, you know, when there is middle school traffic and when there is a train crossing, yes, traffic backs up, and it will continue to do so. It's, that's kind of addition and not something that, obviously, we are going to be able to fix. So happy to answer any questions, happy to collaborate, whatever you want to do.
Do we have any commissioner questions for her at this time?
Sure, I'll ask one. So I'm hearing your comments, Ms. Schroeder, and I'm hearing our staff comments about gridded street networks. And, and yes, I mean, being part of the last comprehensive plan and discussions later on, I hear that. I'm wondering, at what point does an area become so small that it's, you know, like the impacts or the positive effects of a gridded street network are kind of lost on a, on a property that's, you know, the size of this? I'm wondering if that's something you could comment on?
My initial thoughts on that are, it really kind of has to do with making sure that we have enough access. And if, when you have a lot of smaller connections and streets, they're going to function better than trying to get everybody through one intersection together. My other thoughts are, it also is based on kind of pedestrian shed and how far pedestrians are willing to walk. One idea that was thrown out there was doing just an emergency access on Front Street, and obviously something to be studied in more detail, if that is a real consideration that we get direction on moving forward with. And that could include, say, either gate or bollards or something for emergency vehicles, but it could also allow pedestrian bicycle access through there. So to answer that question, it really kind of depends, and it's more about functionality of the surrounding intersections and pedestrian walk shed.
Okay. So I mean, maybe this is not a fair question to ask you, but, you know, just say that if it isn't. So does this area have enough constricted access built into it off South Boulder Road and Highway 42 that it becomes sort of problematic for a gridded street network to work in this area?
Oh, okay. So I would say, as the access control is being applied to the surrounding arterial street network, it's basically making this block, and I use block in a very large term, South Boulder Road, 42, the train, and Griffith, that basically is functioning as one block. In this instance, I realize it is much bigger than one block, but that's all kind of acting together because of those surrounding constraints.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So with the traffic study that has been completed, do you think you have enough information to extrapolate if you were to terminate the Front Street Connection? Could you then assess what the ramifications are for Boulder or South Boulder and 42?
I'm just thinking about what you said. The existing traffic study does not go into detail on that option. In the last 30 days, I have looked at that internally in my office, but have not formalized that in the traffic study. but have not formalized that in the traffic study.
Okay, so if, if you determined that terminating Front Street was a consideration, you'd need a new traffic study?
We would update what we have, yes.
Good.
Additional questions?
I just have a sort of logistical question. If you were to terminate this and do some sort of a, sort of pedestrian, bike, and emergency access only, would that be something like, you would put up those like, posts that can be lowered, even? I was trying to figure out how that would work.
Ideally, what I have seen is some large bollards that restrict access. There's multiple ways to do it, and we could work with the fire department on what that would look like. In other communities, there's areas where there are retractable bollards, and they're electric, and people have like the RFID to get through them. And so if an emergency vehicle had an RFID, or say, some delivery truck, or, not saying open it to delivery trucks, I'm just saying if some vehicle needed access through there, the bollards would retract and go down, and then they can come back up. But there's lots of solutions for how to do that.
Thanks also for the commission, thinking about questions that we might have for the city traffic engineer as we evaluate what, what, what we want to learn more about.
I can't hear you.
Oh. Yes.
Do we have a city traffic engineer? Okay, yes. So my question for the city is, have you given much thought to what this street design looks like? Because we've done some very creative things in Louisville in the past couple of years, and this is another opportunity for traffic calming and managing traffic on a, on a street. So do you have some thoughts on what that street might look like?
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Folks, I'm the city engineer in Public Works. So we have been working as staff to look at some traffic calming measures. We've actually implemented some throughout the city, including speed humps, raised crosswalks, and then as the applicant mentioned, also kind of narrowing the street with bump outs. So those are definitely three options that we can look at for traffic calming, you know, looking at that Front Street connection. That also would help prevent cut-through traffic as well, so.
Commissioner Hunt?
I know that, that, the, sort of the big overarching concern here is the, the mess that is South Boulder Road and Highway 42. So are there, I mean, I feel like that's a, the, the Front Street connection is sort of a, the reason that's a problem is because we have the bigger problem. Are there, what is in the works, is there anything in the works to try to deal with that issue separately from this development? Because I do feel like this could potentially exacerbate that.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner. So we do have the future 42 plan that we're working on, which would widen out Highway 42. We're also looking at adding turn lanes to South Boulder Road at the 42 connection, which would help mitigate traffic measures at, at this location. So we are, as a city, working through that. It's a big project, so we're currently, we're currently looking for grant funding in the form of Dr. Cog tips or any other grants that we're applying for to get some of these costs covered.
Are, are there other, are additional light, lighted, traffic light intersections being considered? So I know that at least one of the comments mentioned that.
Right, so yeah, good question. During, the future 42 study does look at that due to the proximity of the intersection, so you don't want traffic lights kind of stacked up upon traffic lights. So putting a traffic light at Cannon or Griffith is not considered in the future 42 plan due to the proximity of this arterial, arterial intersection. So that becomes one of the bigger concerns with, I'll say, not having the Front Street connection, is that making a left turn out of this proposed development would be very difficult, you know, because the only option is Cannon Street currently, which at some point in the future will likely be closed off as far as the left turn out from Cannon going westbound onto South Boulder Road. And there's currently no left turn movement in the development if you cut off Front Street on 42.
Good question on, the scope of the traffic study we have, or a typical traffic study, I mean, is it literally passenger vehicles? I mean, somebody just literally mentioned delivery trucks. So with the exponential increase in delivery trucks and e-bikes, are those factors that are baked into the traffic study?
So I'm going to defer to the applicant's engineer on that. I don't have specific details on the traffic study.
We looked at a multimodal approach, knowing that we're close to schools and some transit and other amenities, and assumed that 5% of the traffic was a conservative assumption that would be pets, bikes, or transit. And so in the site plan and layout, there are, you know, sidewalk connections, et cetera, to accommodate non-vehicular traffic. I guess maybe when I was talking about delivery trucks, I wouldn't expect that there actually would be, you know, a large amount of delivery trucks or anything other than, you know, when construction is happening. And I, I wasn't really intending for that to be, you know, talking about delivery trucks going through a certain area.
Well, I guess, what I was, 188 units is a lot of Amazon Prime deliveries. I mean, seriously, right? Is that in the traffic study, do you think?
Institute of Transportation Engineers, national standards, when we come up with our traffic rates. And yeah, that is all included in that.
Okay.
And just to add to that, you know, we restrict construction vehicular access. So we would say to all of our subcontractors, you know, you cannot utilize Front Street. And, and they're very used to that, because we deal with this almost in every subdivision. So we would restrict any, you know, construction traffic off of Front Street.
Yeah.
And I think, and I think you can actually do that with Amazon, too. I think you can talk to them about preferred routes as well.
Okay.
Additional questions as it relates to traffic? So I guess, it seems likely that we're interested in learning more about these possible alternatives, and that staff needs to be provided with something to react to, and when we consider alternatives to this. How specifically, do, actually, I guess I would be asking your traffic engineer as to what additional parameters do you want to hear about as regards kind of expanding this to take into account some of these alternatives? Do you know what you need to know?
Yeah, I think, you know, just in the past, you know, if, if you want us to, you know, study something, and you have a, a condition to study traffic calming measures, you know, I think we'll put, you know, extra emphasis working with, you know, staff on different traffic calming measures and various items like that.
Well, it may be a study that we want to see in advance. So I don't know how amenable you would be to discussing that as an option.
Are you?
Yeah.
I, I think if you want to study, I think you can give some parameters of what you want, but I also want to make sure that the city engineer especially has the opportunity to kind of weigh in on the information we need. You know, just as an example, if there isn't vehicular traffic going out to Griffith, I'm, I'm not sure how you can go westbound on South Boulder Road. There's, there's no potential movement for that. So this, for example, the traffic study would have to address that issue. And the city engineer may have other things that they want to have addressed in the study. So I think it's more than just calming the traffic. Unless you're talking about keeping it open, and then just having calming measures, I think that's a completely different thing. But I don't think that's a traffic study issue, that's just a design issue.
A design issue, right, no. This would be looking at this option.
When you, sorry, when you, when you say that the issue of turning left on, going west on South Boulder Road, that this impacts that who going left on South Boulder Road?
So, so any, and again, somebody correct me if I'm wrong here on the traffic engineering side and the, the design of this development, but my understanding is any vehicle trips that, that start from within the development, and they want to go into Boulder on South Boulder Road, I don't think there's any movement unless they come out to Griffith, to Main. Griffith, I think in the 42 study, does actually have a future signal, so you could also go out to Griffith and 42 and turn left northbound onto 42, and then left onto South Boulder Road. So for example, if the train's backed up, or there's a lot of school traffic, once that signal's in, or even maybe before, if the traffic's not bad, you know, you can, you can make your way around and then go westbound. Or if the traffic's, if school's not being dropped off and there's no train, you can go up Main Street and go west on South Boulder Road.
But if the, if the Front Street is sort of built in the new neighborhood, but just not a through street, couldn't people from the new neighborhood, couldn't there be a left turn from front that way? No. It has to be a through street in order to turn left?
So you mean, where Front Street connects to South Boulder Road?
Yeah, if you were to-
Yeah, so that's going to be median controlled, so you can't turn left from Front Street onto South, it's not a safe-
So neither way, would you be left turn on Front Street from there?
You can't, you can't directly go from Front Street onto South Boulder Road, because that, that would be a dangerous movement, so it's going to be median controlled, I believe. Somebody will correct me, I know, but I'm pretty sure that's cut off, so you can't turn left.
So you're saying that people have, we're going to have to come down through Front Street the other direction to Griffith, and then up to turn left?
Yes, in order to go westbound, this, there's, otherwise, you could end up having, and this is the other thing we'd want in the traffic study, is, you know, vehicles could be going out onto South Boulder Road, and then have, making, cutting all the way over into the left turn lane, and then making U-turns. And so that, those are unsafe movements, too. So we would have to really consider forcing people to do that as well. So the, so I think there's a lot to consider from the alternative. I don't, like, volume-wise, I understand you can kind of get in and out, but we have to think practically about how to serve the development and residents in the development, what realistically they're going to need as far as getting in and out of the development.
So Chair, knowing that we're getting dangerously close to deliberation rather than asking questions, I, I, I want to address Director Zaccaro's comment about specifically making an ask of an engineer, right? So understanding that we're talking primarily in terms of our hypotheticals about people originating from this development going to Boulder, that's kind of the big concern, right? Because people who are originating here and going other places are going to find their own way. We're concerned with people originating here going to Boulder. I think a direct ask from a traffic engineering study, knowing that as the city engineer just stated, there are no left turns out of here to go west, right? It's only right turns out of this development. I would like to see the metrics from origination at this location in this development going to Boulder, and a time differential of right turns, which are more effective than left turns, going down to 36, travel time going to different locations in Boulder compared to the potential pathway through the city, through other stoplights, or turning left, or, you know, going Main and down South Boulder, to see what the actual impact would be of facilitating a right turn out of front onto Griffith, onto Main, onto South Boulder, you know, in terms of what does that travel time look like from this origination to Boulder compared to this origination, potentially going down to 36 and going down to Boulder.
Right, so I think we can have some aspect of that. You know, right now, there is trip distribution that suggests, I think there, and it's peak hour, there'd be five to six trips, and we don't know, of those five to six peak hour trips, you know, some might be going down to Mo's Bagels, some might be, you know, but there's a few, we assume, that will want to go westbound, and they may not be going all the way to Boulder, they may be going to a business in Louisville on South Boulder, right? So there's all, but they, I think they can redistribute those trips to further intersections. And so what I think we would ask them to do is to evaluate the Griffith and Main Street intersection, and then the Main and South Boulder Road intersection for trip distribution and volumes and all of that. So we would add two intersections to the study, is I think the best way to do that.
Yeah, and, and I think that addresses it well. I mean, it expands that envelope, right, and looks at the conditions at those other variables that go into play, for sure. So I, I think that would be a specific ask for an alternate arrangement, if we're asking for additional information, notwithstanding any other discussion that we want to have.
And we, we've done that before with trip times and different, you know, you know, navigation routes. One thing that I've been looking into, and, you know, Carrie and I have chatted about, is actually if you take a left on, you know, you take a right on South Boulder Road and a left and go to Arapahoe, that's like the Boulder traffic that's actually the fastest. And so we can put together various routes and show, you know, A, what apps, you know, carry you, because, you know, we've done that in a few instances as well. Hey, what does Waze do? What does, what does Google Maps take you through at different times of the, you know, day for different, you know, congestion, you know, measures? And so that's actually a really preferred route other than South Boulder Road to get to Boulder.
And, and that's what I'd like to see, because if we're predicating this, this conversation on the access south onto Front, onto Griffith, onto Main, to then go elsewhere, right? And, and if we're talking about these destination intervals that might vary by one, two, three minutes, you know, my, my question would be, is the juice worth the squeeze, having this that is, you know, potentially something that could be served and meet a, a different compromise with a different configuration?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, when you look at it, you know, going all the way through, you know, almost to downtown, is actually pretty slow comparative to, you know, hit South Boulder Road and then 95th, or, you know.
So do we have comfort with what we are hoping to see more in the traffic study?
Right, so I, I just want to confirm, I think the applicant is probably requesting to move forward, if you want, you know, with either design, right? I think if we move, if you wanted to continue the hearing and try to make a recommendation to move the application forward, I would at least recommend that that traffic study get updated before city council. It's hard, for the preliminary plan, I think we need to at least get that before city council. If you want that traffic study to come back, I think you could continue the hearing to another date certain, so that the traffic study could be amended, and we have time to review it. So I think those are the options.
Okay, I would, I'll, the commission for that, Commissioner Moline?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I would just say, again, at the risk of not deliberating here, but, I mean, I, I feel like this is really important. Like, the, the key issue for this, for this item, and I guess I feel like it would be really incumbent upon our, upon the planning commission to get the study and to help us provide, you know, you, you were even asking, you know, for, for our guidance and, and, you know, the things that we can provide to you, applicant, as a recommendation for how this thing could work best. And I think we are going to need that study to, to be able to then give you that, that good recommendation. And I, I guess I'm, I'm also just, I wanted to just say, you know, thanks to the community, because what I'm hearing from the community is less of a no, you know, just no, 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 and more of a, you know, we understand what's going on in the city and some of the changes that have been happening, but we need to make sure that what you're proposing isn't going to, you know, dramatically impact our quality of life in our existing community. And so I guess, for, it's for those kinds of reasons that I feel like we, we're, we really need to see the study here at the planning commission, that would be my sense.
So with, with deference to Commissioner Moline, as a procedural question, Chair, knowing that this shouldn't be a game of bring me a rock, no, not that rock, right? How much do we want to go through in terms of our deliberation to fully inform any additional action or investigation that the applicant is going to make?
Right, so that's, that's exactly what we're discussing right now.
Yeah.
I'm not going to answer that directly, I want to hear what other commissioner, what other commissioner members feel. I mean, right, there is potential, so before I go too deep into this, there's a lot of other issues we still need to discuss. Yeah.
Have other questions that don't involve traffic?
So, maybe-
It sounds like we may have the option for a full discussion deliberation that may, at the end, inform additional requests by inference for the applicant.
And it may either be a continuance, or it may, or it may be a condition, so.
Procedurally, then what does that mean? Are we going to- Procedurally, then what does that mean? Are we gonna close the hearing and deliberate, or are we gonna, I'm confused, is what you're suggesting?
Uh, well, we've got other issues we want to discuss-
Right.
While, while the hearing is still open.
Right.
And so we're gonna need to move into those.
Right, okay.
And, at the end of the evening, we're gonna have to decide how we want to move to procedurally, right? Those are both options.
And, and then if I could get, just make sure about this, I mean, if we, if we entertain new information from, let's say, a new traffic study, that would, I mean, that would reopen a public hearing, and would likely do that.
Right, I think if a new traffic study is submitted, you would want to, I think you would want to take additional comments. And there's gonna be a little bit of redesign on the plan, so I think you'd open up the public comment portion again.
Yeah. So that said, additional questions on any of the other issues, and we can come to our conclusion on this in a little bit. Was there anything else you wanted to add on the traffic study?
I'm ready, I got the-
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Um, you know, all I was gonna say is, you know, I understand, you know, you guys wanna, you know, look at, you know, revised, you know, traffic study. I think also if we get a recommendation to investigate that, I think we have time between, you know, this hearing and the City Council hearing, like Rob was talking about, where we could provide that. So, you know, I think there's an avenue where, you know, you could have recommendations that we need to investigate X, Y, and Z, and we have time to, you know, consult with staff and our traffic engineer, and provide an adequate study in time for, you know, City Council.
And by recommendation, you're talking about a condition-
A condition.
Out of approval, okay. Additional issues?
I wanted to ask about drainage. That, if I'm remembering right, there were a few neighbors that brought up some questions about that. That, and then also coupled with, I'd be interested in hearing your response about the site itself as it stands now, any efforts at, at saving trees, or preserving trees where possible. And, and then also the, the, I would want to hear again maybe your thoughts about the park's dedication and your thinking there, so.
Okay, yeah. You know, I'll, I'll hit it at a high level with the drainage, but we have our civil here who can dig in further, but, you know, high-level drainage, you know, everything's, you know, getting, you know, put into a storm system, and there's, there's no off-sheeting of flows onto, you know, Little Italy, even though, you know, arrow-wise, when you look at the, you know, erosion control plan, you know, obviously that's the low point, but we are collecting all of that and putting it into a detention pond. And even the overflow, everything is going away from Little Italy to the east across forty-two. So, I know there was a little misconception on that, but the reality is that we are not, you know, sheet-flowing onto Little Italy. So that's sort of the high level, if you want to dig in, you know, we, we have our expert. And then, you know, as far as your other comment with regards to-
So, maybe two, maybe just two other quick points, just the existing vegetation, trees on-site, and then just the park dedication?
Yeah, so on the trees, we had an arborist do a tree survey, and so we literally surveyed every single tree on the property, and, you know, to my knowledge, and, you know, I think Matt can attest to this, they assign a score for each tree, and, you know, a lot of the trees were, you know, not a high score, which, you know, they were all, you know, you know, there's some, you know, there's some choice trees there, but I think predominantly it was, it was more, you know, sort of junky-type trees and, and a lot of invasive species. And so, I, you know, we can hear more about that, but that was my understanding. And we're, we're trying to, you know, save trees where we can, but the predominant, you know, score was, was really low on a lot of those trees. And then as far as, you know, public land dedication, I'm not, you know, the expert, but what I do remember, because this was happening, you know, you know, years ago with, you know, a different staff, and, you know, everyone dug in, you know, really firmly on that aspect of things. And, you know, I, I believe the city attorney was involved, and we had a lot of different discussions about that. And so, I know it was, you know, it wasn't overlooked, it was dug into, and, you know, sought through, and that was the, you know, staff's findings, you know. And I, and Rob, I don't know if you have more to add about that?
Right, so, the public land dedication, when a property has already been subdivided, our practice has been, even if it was subdivided a hundred, a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty years ago, our practice has been that we don't seek a public land dedication because it's already subdivided. The code, you know, the, the code language does maybe have some discretion there, but that's been our practice.
And so I'm taking your interpretation of the word adequate to mean what was in place at the time that it was subdivided? And so, if at the time that it was subdivided in eighteen nineties, there was no required land dedication, then that was considered adequate at the time?
I, I think that's the logic, but-
Yeah.
Adequate is open for determinate, for anybody to determine, of course, so.
Can I ask a clarification, potentially on, on Commissioner Moline's question? Maybe if you could talk about either your typical design standard or approach, or the specific design standard or approach that you're taking based on the topography of this site? What, what stormwater event do you plan for with your detention areas?
Um, you know, why don't-
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, the, we can have the civil speak to that.
Joel from, you know, Rocky Ridge is here, and, you know, has very familiar with, you know, the city codes and order entrances, so I think he can talk.
Great, thanks. And, and it's late at night, so the pun of digging into it with the civil, I just couldn't avoid it.
Engineers are historically brief, so I'll be true to that. So, Joel Siemens, Rocky Ridge Civil Engineering, we've been tasked to collect all the developed flow and convey it in inlets and pipe to the southeast corner in a detention pond where it will provide water quality and detention for the whole development. And it'll be released at a historic rate. So that's, so it's the hundred-year flow that'll, it'll detain and be released at a historic flow. Afian, I can't remember if it's the ten or the hundred-year historic, but it is at historic rates.
And, and did you contemplate at all, looking based on the impermeable area that's going to be developed, what it would take to get to accommodate a hundred fifty or a five-hundred-year event?
Um, in, in doing it for, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's, question's never been asked, it seems like the hundred-year has always been the, the standard. We, you know, in theory, yes, you could make bigger detention areas to provide further greater-than-a-hundred-year, but even in the two thousand thirteen storm that we, we had, rivers were flowing at a hundred-year flow, but local developments were not seeing that intensity of a hundred-year flood to the pond. So all, all the ponds that I was, I was driving around during the two thousand thirteen storm, and all the ponds were half-full that I saw, whereas, then you'd go down to the Saint Varane River, and it was blowing out County Line Road. But the, so the hundred-year flow in a river is much different than a hundred-year intensity coming into a site. So those can be easily confused, but, but yeah, for the pond sizing, it's traditionally a hundred-year.
That was not a brief answer, but I appreciate it.
Sorry, I'll sit down now.
No, that's great, thank you. Any additional questions regarding stormwater detention, public space?
I just-
Yeah, please.
I just had a question about, about the, sort of, marketing of these units and sort of their price point and stuff. And, you know, part of our concern, of course, is to have, is to, different types of housing and, you know, affordability is an issue. Are these homes, I guess, really affordable, is the question? And I guess I also wanted to know if you've done any research into the, the marketability of these very, very tiny homes? Like, are people really gonna buy these? So there's just a couple of questions I had about that.
Yeah, um, you know, with the tiny homes, you know, we have some data on, you know, deed-restricted homes, and so we do have some working knowledge of deed-restricted onsite-built affordable homes. And if you take the demand, you know, for those, and you apply it to, you know, a, a smaller footprint, but then lend them a leg up by not having it deed-restricted, we think that is the demand for those units. Having the ability to, you know, realize the appreciation is sort of the marketability for a, a tiny home. And, you know, you know, one of my friends is one of the chairs for the Tiny Home Nation, and, and so he talks a lot about how much demand is out there with the housing crisis, and, you know, the different levels of, you know, you know, income and shortage of, of housing, and, you know, you look at apartments, but then if you apply how much you're spending on a, an apartment, and you can, you know, there's a lot of smaller apartments out there on the market, and they're getting, you know, absorbed. And so then you can sort of apply that too, with, you know, a calculation on a mortgage with a tiny home. And, and we've made the decision that, yes, you know, we feel like it's a, you know, an in-demand product. But, yeah, marketing-wise, you know, it's always, it's always challenging, and I think the last, you know, three, four years, you know, is, is one of the reasons you can see why it's, it's challenging to say, hey, you know, we're gonna be right here, because, you know, in two years, or whenever, you know, this comes to market, you know, these costs have been, you know, rising, you know, rapidly, and, and you're even seeing that with the AMI, and, you know, the affordability on deed-restricted stuff is, you know, coming up, because it's, it's, it's challenging to, you know, nail a segment, you know, years in advance. You know, if the, if you hit a recession, and, you know, materials get cheaper, you know, we're sort of, it's, the market, you know, dictates what it is. And I think our, you know, ethos is, if we can have a smaller unit, it's just naturally gonna have a lower price point. And so, you know, that's really the only way we can achieve that, you know, is, is trying to, you know, A, we're, we're responding by providing deed-restricted, you know, affordability, but we're also trying to do that attainable, you know, price point with non-deed-restricted housing, and letting people realize that appreciation. So, we're trying to attack it in multiple ways.
And just to follow up, on the non-tiny homes, the, the other townhomes, ones that will be sold, is your, I mean, are these gonna be considered sort of the luxury high-end, or are they gonna be mid-range?
We're, we're thinking of them as, you know, mid-range, and we have multiple product types within those townhomes. So we have what we call like a twenty-four-foot-deep product, and, and that is a smaller product that's more affordable. And so we, we, we don't just have the micro homes and the deed-restricted homes, we also have sort of this, you know, smaller townhome that we think is gonna hit a, you know, major, you know, demand, you know, nerve, and then we have a, a larger townhome product.
And what are the square footages you're looking at for those homes?
Yeah, it's, it's a little, like, again, it's, it's hard to tell, you know, it's, you know, we have the infrastructure costs that are, you know, escalating greatly lately, and, you know, I mean, ideally, you know, we're trying to hit that, you know, hundred and twenty AMI is sort of what we're gunning for.
I think she was asking about square footage.
Square footage.
Oh, square footage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in that, you know, you know, twelve hundred, or, you know, eleven hundred to like, fourteen to fifteen hundred-
Okay.
You know, between the two different, you know, townhomes.
Additional questions of the applicant? No? All right, last chance. So actually, I'm hearing you indicated preference for, you would prefer obviously approval with the conditions. If we were not comfortable with that, as we kind of straw-pole after a little bit more discussion, is, is a potential continuance? Are you gonna be able to make that work with the traffic study, essentially?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's sort of, yeah, your discretion, but, yeah, we're, we're happy to provide, you know, improved and sort of relooked-at traffic study, you know, and, and who we give that, you know, we'll be getting that to staff regardless, it sounds like. So, we're happy to work with staff, get them, you know, a revised traffic, and, you know, again, I think it would be great to have some direction with that. So, yeah, if we could get some direction and shine a light on some of the areas of concern, we're happy to go investigate that and bring it forth.
Have we not indicated that clearly enough?
No, I think, I mean-
Yeah.
I obviously know, but, you know, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
With that, then I'd invite the staff for a response and closing statement. And actually, I'll, I'll bounce back to the, you know, go ahead, please, coming up. Does staff wish to address anything raised by the public comment, or provide any additional information for the planning commission to consider?
Well, I was planning on starting with the traffic study, but I think that there has been plenty of discussion regarding the study up to this point. I would just state that, in, in regard to a potential continuance for a new study, I, I do think there is some additional clarification, you know, discussion that would, direction for the applicant, so that staff also has a, a clear direction as to what our role is with a new review and potentially a new design that would be triggered by the results of a new technical study. So, I would just-
So, and so on that question, what, what more?
Well, specifically whether it would just be to investigate the additional intersections that were, that were brought up, or, and/or traffic coming and/or closing Front Street.
Right.
So, just clarification on that point. As far as other, just, just running through other items here, public land dedication, I think Director Zaccaro covered that, and what staff interpretation and process has been for quite some time now, as it relates to Section sixteen and the public land dedication process. To my knowledge, it's been a relatively consistent application through the years. As far as signalization is concerned, again, this was covered in some of the previous conversations. The Future Forty-Two Plan calls for signalization of Griffith and Highway forty-two. We talked about some of the median restrictions also that will, that existed on South Boulder Road. Again, we brought that up. There's also gonna be a median restriction on Cannon Street, the south leg of Cannon Street that goes east to west out to Highway forty-two. The Future Forty-Two Plan, there will be a median there, so there will be no left turns out of Cannon Street, when that's, when that's approved. As far, one of the, I believe, Mr. Cooperman brought up the concept plan process, why this wasn't brought to, or, or taken as a concept plan. Just a reminder, this application has been in review since twenty-twenty-one. We, the concept plan process wasn't adopted until the end of last year, actually, so when this application was first submitted, we had the, the concept plan process didn't exist. And so it's also just worth indicating, again, that, you know, since twenty-twenty-one, you know, this, again, six review cycles of this particular application, and so a lot of, a lot, not, not a ton of iterations of it have gone through, but a lot of review has occurred on this application, you know, prior, prior to me even being here, and with, through planning and public works, and quite a few referrals. I will just indicate too that in, in regard to the deed, I'm sorry, not the deed restrictions, but the street connection at Front Street, and some of the conversation about the requirement for that, I, this wasn't brought up in previous, in the previous hearing, but we do have pretty extensive provisions in our mixed-use development design standards and guidelines that actually call for that connectivity in the Highway forty-two revitalization area. Specifically, again, you know, Director Zaccaro brought this up, but grid networks, we have block length and width standards in the mixed-use design guidelines that specifically limit the width of blocks in the MUR district. I believe the number is two hundred and seventy to three hundred feet, right? So when we're looking at a review and we get a proposal in, we'll apply that standard, and that does apply to this property. I believe the South Boulder Road frontage is almost six hundred feet, right? So when we're reviewing that, and it, it- So when we're reviewing that and administering the design guidelines, we will make that comment and then again to, uh, to implement those design guidelines. So there are multiple provisions in the mixed-use design guidelines that would support the Front Street connection. Um, so again, just bringing that up as a point of deliberation and as a, as a standard that's, uh, that's been applied by, by staff. Um, I, I do believe that that would be, um, all of the items that I had written down. Um, and again, just, yeah, I, I, you know, I had a note here that any development, again, that occurs on that property, the mixed-use development standards would apply and that would, the, the block length and design standards and the, and the connectivity and gridded requirement for Highway 42 revitalization area would apply as well. So...
Great, questions for staff?
Well, if we didn't ask this, I'll, you know, clearly, or if I didn't ask this clearly, so if we wanted to, um, I guess what I'm, what I would prefer would be to see the results of the traffic study and then revisit the hearing. So what's, what is your staff preference on the best way to, to do that and perhaps the best way to, to make a motion to that effect?
And, yeah, in regard to the, the request for a new technical study, obviously, we would, the applicant would have to prepare that study, uh, and staff would need time to re-review that study. That study may or may not trigger additional design improvements in the preliminary PUD and preliminary plat. I can't necessarily, uh, say what that is right now with actually seeing the results of the study and again, knowing exactly what we want in that study. Um, and I'm sorry, what's the second part of your question, Commissioner?
Well, I'm just looking for a way, like, a, a suggested motion, you know, what, what, what is it? How do we, how do we convey through a motion that we would like to see these additional studies and make sure that they're made available to, to city staff and then come back for a hearing on, on it?
Yeah, I think I'll, I think I'll kick that to Director Zakaro or, or Manager Hurt if you got a...
So I, I think you could, I think if you wanted to make a motion, you could, um, move to continue to a date certain. We could talk about the date and in order to revise the traffic study to consider all the options we talked about. So it was traffic calming, closing Front Street except to emergency and ped and bike, um, and then also studying the additional intersections, Griffith and Main, Main and South Boulder Road, and that, that study would be provided to staff, staff would be able to review it, make comments and recommendations to you, and then you would review it at that date certain. So I think that would be, I think as, if nothing else changes other than potentially, the road would still exist, but it would be closed through traffic. I think that's, we could continue that to a date certain. It's not a significant enough change that we'd have to like redo the hearing or anything. So that would be the motion. I kind of had some comments in with my motion, but...
I have a quick question.
Please.
A new study, how, what's the scope of a new study? So does it go as far as coming back with recommendations or your review of a study, does it come back with recommendations on, for example, traffic lights or calming measures in surrounding streets?
Yeah, so the, the traffic study would, um, analyze, um, the, it would analyze the level of service at the intersections and then they, the applicant would have to suggest, recommend, um, traffic improvements, they'd have to recommend improvements if any were needed at any of the intersections. Um, it could, and then our city engineer and staff would review it and we'd be able to come back and say, yes, we agree this works, or it doesn't work, or there's issues to consider, pros and cons between different options. I mean, we could, there's a lot we could do with that study. Um, if you want more info, you might want to ask the applicant's traffic engineer or the city engineer what would be included in that study.
I'll just add too, if it's okay, there was discussion around two intersections, so Griffith and Main and then Main and South Boulder Road, and I don't know that Griffith and Highway 42 was considered. I just want to throw that out there as a consideration so that that's not potentially missed if a new traffic study is presented, so...
Can I just ask one last question and maybe this is of the applicant's engineer, um, traffic engineer as well? I know that the metrics were identified for that southwest corner during the three peak times of morning, afternoon and weekend peak, um, with, I think somewhere between, if I remember correctly, between six and 12 vehicles per hour during those peak period times. What are the metrics associated with the intersections of Front and South Boulder Road and Cannon and Highway 42 during those same peak period times in terms of absolute vehicles per hour?
That is in the traffic study. Um, and so if the applicant's traffic engineer is on and has that information up, it's, it, it is in the traffic study.
No, it's in there somewhere. I just, yeah.
It is.
It wasn't, it wasn't in the presentation.
Yeah, it was not, so, um, I'm not sure if she has that up and she can answer that question.
I, I can work on that. I don't have it up right now, but I can work on that.
Okay. I think there's also concern for Harper. I think that was some of the concern I saw.
Oh, yep. It looks like Cameron has his hand raised.
Cameron, did you have something to add?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. May I, may I just suggest that maybe, uh, the traffic engineer get with city staff to determine the new scoping, uh, based on, uh, we, we recommend the, the two intersections, so Main and Griffith and Main and South Boulder Road based on the Front Street connection continuing to happen, but if the, if the commission wants to look at a closure of Front Street, I think we need to probably expand and look at, just like Matt said, Griffith and 42, probably Harper, and, and take a look at that broader impact, uh, not having that Front, uh, Front Street connection would have. So what I would suggest is city staff work with the applicant's engineer on scoping the revisions to the traffic study based on your direction and we can revise the traffic study and then we would get a chance to review it and then come back to council or to, uh, commission.
Great, thanks. Thanks for chiming in too.
So I guess I'll ask that question that Rob suggested for the city engineer. Um, would, would your recommendations and review with the applicant extend as far as mitigation measures in surrounding streets or would it literally address, you know, the Front Street intersection?
So even if it's just traffic calming outside of the project area?
Yes.
Is that the question?
Yep.
Yeah, typically we don't look at traffic calming outside the current development, but it's something that, uh, we could work with the, the development and the developer on for sure. So it's typically not standard usually worked through that within the development, but it's something we can definitely work through with the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Part of any additional questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, thank you. I will now close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to begin? Well, maybe I can start at the far end here, uh, work our way down.
Um, not sure I have much to add to what we've already discussed.
How, how are you feeling at this time? What, what, what do you think, right, so procedurally, we do have options?
Yes, um, I would like to find a way to approve the application. The traffic concerns are serious and significant and I think we do need the enhanced study to understand what options we might have.
Well, that's in-house evaluation of the external study.
Yes, yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
So that's, that's where I land. The drainage, I think, you know, concerns but have been addressed. The public land dedication, you could argue is unfortunate, but I'm not going to argue with city staff on the precedent and recommendation there. Um, it's always better to have more green space, more public space, but I'm satisfied in that regard. So it's the traffic that is the serious concern.
Thank you. Commissioner Choi.
So I'll talk about a few things here. Very high level in terms of the application. Big question first and foremost, I think, that even enables this conversation is the rezoning. Um, I, I really appreciate the staff's comments in the report. You know, first bullet point, the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a great degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area, right? That's one of the reasons why we have for rezoning. The public interest for rezoning this property is to stimulate development of the vacant areas around Highway 42 and South Boulder Road, check. To achieve the desired mixed-use environment, check. Boost economic activity, yep. Provide additional housing in the city of Lewisville, yes. Right, we know we need all those things. So I, I really am behind the rezoning on principle that enables the discussion about the development. Let's put that on the shelf for a second. Um, I'm an engineer, I love data, I love studies, right? Let's get more and more and, and, you know, study things to death. That being said, right, sometimes we, we have a hard time moving forward and we get this analysis paralysis. I will say that all of the specificity that we've discussed this evening about what we want in an additional study, how it's going to be used, how it's going to be analyzed, you know, all of those things, I don't think we need another study at all. We're talking about as the traffic engineering has shown, an additional six to 12 cars per hour during peak period times on that southwest corner with the appurtenance that's provided when you make the connection between Front Street and Griffith. That is by the nature of having no intersection there right now, an infinite increase in the vehicles at that area, right? So that's a lot. Infinity is a lot. When we're talking about six to 12 vehicles per peak hour from this development, that if but not for that connection would be redistributed to the other three major connection points from this development, six to 12 vehicles per peak hour at those streets that are already the arterial streets, not the feeders, not the connectors, right, is, is respectively a much smaller percentage than infinity, which again, is a big number, right? So, from my perspective, understanding that yes, there's no left turn out of here, but we've already contemplated, if you're going somewhere in Boulder, you could come out Cannon, go down 42, go down to Main Street, go, you know, west on Griffith, get wherever you're going in Lewisville. If you're going to Boulder, you go right on South Boulder, up to Arapahoe, up to baseline or right on 42 down to 36. There are a lot of options to go west from here that don't require traffic to come down through Front Street onto Griffith, right, to get to that infinite level of increased vehicle during those peak period hours. So I, I don't think that we need a vehicle access from Front to Griffith from this development. What I do think, to the point of connection, right, going back to the intent of the rezoning, is creating that pedestrian and bicycle connection from this development to the downtown area that we still want to draw people towards, right? And, and make that connection in a responsible way that isn't, you know, car focused, single car focused, single occupancy vehicle focused. So from my perspective, we don't need that. Now, it's been talked about emergency access, right? First responders coming in there. The, the most concentrated response to this area of first responders is going to be from Lewisville Station One on Main Street or Lewisville Police Department that, you know, is, is obviously over on Via Appia, um, or roaming vehicles, right? If you're coming from Lewisville Police Department on Via Appia, you're not going to be coming through downtown through Main Street to come up north on Front Street. If you're coming from Lewisville Station One, quite frankly, you're not going to have time to even input an address in this location into the CAD system to be able to, to make the turn on Griffith to then go up. You're going to go up Main Street and then come back down around because you're not even going to know where you're going coming from Station One. So having emergency access from this location doesn't benefit fire or police response from either one of the two stations or anywhere else in town. It only would benefit a, a first response from northbound 42 coming west on Griffith, right? And, and again, if that's the case, you know, the difference between getting there through the Front Street connection or another connection is going to be minimal, negligible, right? So, you know, again, like Commissioner Mang's, I, I would like to find a way to, to accommodate the hard work that has been going on from the applicant for the last three years, commend all of the dedication and attention from the residents that have dedicated their time to trying to work to find a solution, you know, acknowledge the effort that the city staff has put together in, in, in terms of formulating an approach and working with the applicant to do so. And I think that we can do that without another study, simply with a condition for that southern access road to be modified through a design change to be bicycle and pedestrian access only. That's all.
Thank you.
I appreciate your confidence. I'm, I'm not sure that I have enough information to be confident that, that is the solution, although it's one that I very much want to hear more about. Um, I don't want to add any more to the content, I'm kind of interested in the process at this point, so I don't want to send this to city council. I think we have a lot more work to do here. So I would be interested in continuing it to a date certain when we can receive additional information on, um, traffic patterning and, uh, duration and all that good stuff. Um, that's all I've got.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Maline?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I can be brief. I, I appreciate Commissioner Choi's really thoughtful, um, explanations there. At some level, it, that isn't quite the application before us, and at least for, for me. And so I also sort of feel like I, I want to make sure that our city staff have had a chance to review the, what would be the consequences of, of, you know, kind of restricting access on Front Street. And so to me, it, I, I would like to just hear that kind of full suite of, of the traffic options. So I'm, I'm going to be kind of looking for a sort of a continuation as well. Um, I, I also do want to say really appreciate the, the comments from, from you all here in the audience this evening. Really, really great and I appreciate your, at least what, what appears to me to be sort of a willingness to kind of work through this. Same to the applicant and, and of course, I appreciate our staff and, and their good review of this. So anyway, that's sort of where I'm sitting.
Thank you.
Um, I, I too found Commissioner Choi's comments very interesting and thought provoking, but I, what I also heard, I think, was that staff wasn't comfortable, um, just signing off on that for a variety of reasons and, and would probably need more information than us just making that condition. I think that's kind of what you were saying, Jeff. And so I think that's also where I am. I, I also want to commend, I, I thought that the comments from the residents were unusually insightful and interesting to read, so I appreciate the involvement. And, um, and I do want to find a way to approve this because I think we need it. I think we need something like this and I, I appreciate the, sort of the price point that these are going to be aimed at and the size that they're going to be, um, building here. I'm not convinced about the 400 square feet, but, um, I am, I, I do appreciate that we need different kinds of housing stock in, in the city and so, um, I do want to find a way to make this work, so...
Great, thanks. I think I'm in a similar position as the people closest to me, um, in that, um, there's, I do think this development checks the boxes in so many ways that it will likely be good for the city, uh, in the long term. Um, I, that said, I certainly appreciate the neighbors' comments. Um, it'd be interesting, um, as much in the past as I've railed against suburban-style development of curved roads at dead end and all that sort of thing, uh, that in allowing for this emergency-only access, uh, that we'd be creating that, but perhaps purposely in this case. I know the neighborhood I live in is something kind of like that, um, and, uh, while it's typically not viewed as great urban planning anymore, we've come to understand any number of reasons why it doesn't work well without connectivity and that sort of issue, um, ma- maybe- May, maybe, uh, this is something that could be intentional and, and therefore has a different purpose behind it. That said, uh, the proposal before us does not include that, emergency-only access. And so it's not that staff's uncomfortable with it, it's just they don't have the data to evaluate it, to, to come up with a recommendation either way. There's a potential that upon study, that we could determine that, no, that's not gonna work well for any number of reasons that we just don't understand, uh, tonight. So, um, I'm also, uh, leaning towards a continuance. Is it one month or two months?
I, I, I would recommend two months because we, they need to produce the study, we need to get the study. There may be a little back and forth. So I think December 12th is the December meeting? Is that right?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I'll just indicate too that, you know, I think, um, uh, I just, I just got a message from our city engineer and I think, you know, and he indicated some time would be necessary to, to review. So not sure, you know, how we, how, how we view that from a continuation perspective.
So I think we could continue to December 12th. If it's not enough time, we could come back and ask for another continuance. So I think two, but I think it's a minimum of two months, so we can start there. If it's not enough time, we can make another motion in December.
Okay, and that is the right date, 12th? Okay, great. With that then, um, I would entertain a motion.
I will so move.
Okay.
Move, continue. To be a team player.
I'll second.
For Resolution 10 Series 2024 to the December 12th, 2024 meeting.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
6:30.
You're gonna be that certain, yes. Planning Commission meeting, yes. We have a second roll call vote, please.
Krishna Bangs.
Yes.
Krishna Choi.
Yes.
Krishna Baskett.
Yes.
Krishna Mullein.
Yes.
Krishna Hunt.
Yes.
Chair Brown Ice.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you all, very much. All right, uh, let's kind of breeze through here. Planning Commission comments, anybody? Seeing none, staff comments? Any staff comments to wrap up the meeting? No, okay, thank you very much. And at this point in time, we're looking, what do we have for next month? Anything?
I don't, I don't know, I don't think we have anything yet. Yeah.
TBD.
TBD, yeah.
That then, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.